Everyone, calling to order the April tenth meeting of the Newton School Committee. Hello everyone in the school committee chamber and to everyone. And to everyone joining us from home. This is a special school committee meeting on the FY twenty-four budget. In addition to a countryside design enrollment and space program update. And an IT update, our specific budget focus area tonight will be business, finance and planning. And information technology and library services. As with our other special meetings, we will not have a period reserved for public comment tonight. But we will have a public comment during our regular meeting on Wednesday as well as our yearly budget. Budget public hearing. Alright, we've got some audio issues where I don't know. Cut that mic and then share. Alright, I'm going to continue. With that, we'll turn to interim update from our interim superintendent.
Thank you, Tamika. This evening, we have quite a few items to get to.
Can we just use this, Steven? Can we do this? Yes, that works. We're just shifting down. Alright, technical issues sorted. Go ahead, Kathy.
So tonight, just to recap, and I publicly again. Want to thank my assistant superintendents who have been presenting to you both last Monday evening, last Thursday evening. Tonight, you will hear from our director of technology, Stephen Retendi, actually twice. You'll hear from assistant superintendent Liam Hurley. I will join them at the end. But I just want to again talk about the hours that we are certainly working diligently trying to make sense of the budget and trying to support our students. And with that being said, I have said this at each meeting and I want to thank we are hearing from, or at least I am hearing from. Many constituents, many parents, community members about a variety of issues. Please know that I read every single email that comes. I try to thank you for sharing your concerns. And it is something that we discuss as we do our very, very best and. In getting to a point where we move our budget forward. So that really is my update, although I would like to, Madam Chair, ask you. For an opportunity at the end of the meeting to share an update that I think is best shared at the end of the meeting.
Of course, sure. Okay, so let's continue. We don't have a consent agenda tonight. We had one item. That wasn't ready, so we are going to skip over the consent agenda. And start with our first item for update and discussion. It's an IT update. Stephen Retendi, Director of Information Technology and Library Services. Seat is yours.
Thank you very much and welcome everyone. I don't have much of a formal presentation. I sent that memo which is I'm kind of, I'm pulling what I call a Liam Hurley. Where he presents a nice memo and then just sees if there's any questions, but there are a few people that I would like to introduce.
You're famous.
Got to have some humor in there. So I have a few people on my team who are able to come tonight. They're remote. So Eileen Keen, if you're out there, turn on your video. And Tomas and Jack. So Eileen is our library coordinator in the district and also an ITS. She's a point five library coordinator. And point five ITS in the district. She's part of our IT leadership team. Jack Palner is a key member of our database team. He also sits on our leadership team for the department. And then Tomas Bukow is the assistant coordinator for tech services. So the tech services are the folks that are our frontline support for teachers and for students and for staff throughout the district. So those are three members of our key members of our key leadership team. There are a couple of others as well that could not join tonight. But I wanted to make sure that they got acknowledged because they don't often get acknowledged or seen. So there you go. They may also help ask there's some questions if we have some along the way that I can't answer. So just a couple of highlights from the report that you do have in front of you that I shared. We have, there's a lot of projects that we did this summer of an infrastructure nature. You can see that there. NECP was a big project. The NECP project is also indicative of some of the challenges we have in IT right now. Because you'll see there that there's a mention that it's not complete yet. We were still waiting for some network equipment to arrive. When that project needed to open. So we actually used some network equipment that we had just taken out of some of the middle schools. Because we had just run done some wireless updates there. And that's indicative of how long it takes these days to get some of the technology in place. We've heard from various vendors and I'm a little worried for like building projects and getting those orders in early enough. It can be as much as a six, six months to twelve month lead time for some network equipment these days. So that is, we'll finish that project this summer. Everything has now come in. It's just. We only have two months left to the school year. We don't want to interrupt things at this point to finish that work. So we'll do it this summer. We did now have finished replacing all the wireless networks in our middle schools. We had started last year and we did it now this year as well, replacing both switches and wireless access points. I will say that project in particular was funded mostly not by the IT budget, but by other funding. So we did get E-rate funding, which reduces our costs. And then the city was able to provide a lot of money for that as well through, through funding from, I think it was, I think it was ARPA funds that contributed to that. We would have probably have used Esser funds, but that's where we did a little exchange and we were able to free up more Esser money for the district and other places. You'll also see a lot of one, one-to-one funding that was also there. That is the same. We had a lot of one-time funding and the city contributed some for that. Quite a bit. And we also use some of our own IT budget to contribute to that as well, which we have normally done for the high school one-to-one program. I'm just going to open it up for questions. I did, you will also see there that I did mention one of the biggest challenges is long-term funding for equipment and technology. You know, I like to think we do a lot of funding for technology on one-time funds. And that includes things like building projects, right? So we build a new building. We put technology in that building. We don't necessarily have. The budget compensated for the new technology that gets goes in those buildings. So it's a challenge to keep up with from year to year. And you can see that in some of the age reports that are at the back of that document. What questions may you have?
Thanks, Steven. And thank you for the rest of your team for joining us tonight. Questions from the members. Go ahead, Emily.
Thank you again for the Liam-esque memo that you wrote. I thought it was really great and very detailed. So thank you for that. A couple of things. First is, I can't believe we have a twenty-three-year-old printer that's still working and in existence.
People do not want to get rid of their printers.
Okay, it just, I just, the range and the ages of the equipment is fascinating and a little startling. If you're not familiar with how old the technology is, some of it is. So. I think the concept of trying to find a long-term funding source is, as you know, we've had these conversations for years versus a PTO person on my part and then on school committee. Just the importance of trying to find that, that funding source. I'm curious to know, and you don't have to say it now, but I think perhaps at the end of the year, it would be interesting to actually find out what percentage came from PTO funding. And like where we are with that as well. I'm just curious to know.
Yeah, we could probably get that information for you. That's mostly going to be at the elementary schools. And I would say on the printer front, just to address that, we've been trying to reduce the number of printers in the district. So. Our elementary schools had been used to a model where there was like a printer in every classroom. And we're trying to eliminate those as those printers die and go to a more centralized model, which is what we do in the new building. So when we build a new building. We usually have printer stations throughout the building as opposed to putting printers in every building. So that's an overtime project of reduction. Some printers, they just last as long as they do. And then if they die, we're not going to replace them. We're just going to make use of more centralized printers for that. So there's that printer model. But yes, we could probably get the PTO numbers easy enough for you.
I have one more quick question. Well, it's not a quick question, and it may not be for today. It may be for a different day. So I know that all of us on school committee have been getting quite a number of emails recently talking about whether or not. We should be reducing the amount of one-to-one devices or devices particularly for the younger grades in elementary school. And I think at some point, and it doesn't have to be now, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. It may be interesting to hear a little bit more. And I know that it's been presented before, but it. Not everyone was necessarily watching that presentation. And I feel like we've got a lot more people who are watching now. Might be a good idea for us to have a brief update if we can put it in as to what exactly the iPads are being used for in the younger grades.
Absolutely. And I can talk a little bit about that when we do the budget presentation as well.
Thank you.
Part two.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm not sure whether you asked those questions now or after. The same person.
I think let's talk about one-to-one when we do the budget presentation because I'll have some slides in there then and we can, we can address it better there.
In which case, I just want to say that I'm really pleased to see the progress on cyber security issues. Because. First of all, that's an item for our consideration at a policy level. And also the given the huge amount of data in our system. That spending someone to protect that data is money wasting. As we've seen in other school districts around the country. There's a lot of vulnerability there because you have information about students, about parents, about where they live. Types of things that we do at our units and nasty people out there doing their music. So I'm really pleased you're taking additional steps and proposing additions to the budget for, for that purpose. So thanks for putting that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. And I think I'll jump on. The heels of that, just because my question related to cybersecurity was, how many? I know you put in the memo that the staff was grant-funded for training on cybersecurity. How, how many? How extensive is this grant funding?
So it's through the state. The state has a municipal, municipal cyber awareness grant program. And they run the whole thing essentially. We just had to put our name in it, but it covers all staff. So all staff access it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And that will start in the fall.
Great. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks, Steve. The, my question's on the BYOD in the memo here. It looks like. You're contemplating. Implemented at grades eleven and twelve would be about five hundred devices less per year in the replacement cycle. So that's roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So, so. Each grade at the high school between both schools is five hundred, right? Or a thousand? Where am I? A thousand, it's a thousand between counting both. So two grades is two thousand. But I'm, we know that students aren't going to all. Some students will want those devices. So we have to, we, I'm factoring in that students will also potentially need our device and not be able to do BYOD. So we will provide a device for those who need them.
Yeah, I certainly would, would understand that. And I know that was always sort of the plan. I wanted, I wanted to just ask though about. You know, why limit it to eleventh and twelve and why not think about expanding this?
Mostly because of MCAS, which happens in grade ten. And doing MCAS on a bring your own device model is a really challenging prospect. And I, the amount of support we would then need to put into, you'd be talking about more people in order, in order to actually support that. But MCAS is a grade ten exam and it is, it's infinitely more complicated. Do school districts that do it actually essentially take control of the student's device in order to actually implement one-to-one, which is not something that I really want to get into.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So it's from a cost perspective, it might actually become a little counterproductive at this, at any grade level, taking MCAS.
Yes. Yes. And we do have eleventh graders that take MCAS too, but it's much less because it's usually just students retesting at that point or students that are new to the district and we could accommodate. You know, the handful of students we need to work with for that on a given basis. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Any others? Oh, go ahead, Anping.
Okay. I probably missed another joke here. So we have two presentations here. One is IT update operation goals. The other one is kind of formal presentation. So we can talk both or just talk one first?
We'll do, we'll do the budget presentation after. So we haven't gotten to the budget presentation yet. So we're just focusing on, on the goal update.
Okay.
Just the infrastructure piece that first, first memo.
But thank you. Well, Paul touched upon the, you know, accomplishment and contribution you guys and the team to, to our whole MPS operation. It's tremendous. Technology certainly means every day something changing. So your job is not like someone. Who can prepare the class, probably teach a couple of years without much changes to you. It's daily, weekly, monthly. So I like to add the, you know, kudo to you and your team. And also thank you, you know, personally, you helped me a couple of things. And even though it's very minor, but still very helpful.
We got your back on your email.
Yeah, and you're always available. That's nice. And so. On the technology equipment, the ages. I read, I was kind of struck by sentences that probably could highlight a bit more. He said, "Our budget has and continues to rely on one-time funding and outside funding to maintain existing technology." So both are very. You cannot count on one-time funding, of course. It certainly is already indicated very clearly, one-time funding. Outside funding is also challenging. So could you highlight a bit what could have happened and what kind of challenges we will face in a future?
To me, the big part is predictability, right? So I want to be able to have a nice predictable schedule of when we would replace equipment. And we don't have that for most of our equipment now. It does rely on, is there money at the end of the year that is not needed for next year's budget? And then we have, we have a surplus that we can then apply. That doesn't happen from year to year, and it hasn't happened in the last few years because we've had to carry over money. Last couple of years, we have had the benefit of ARPA and Esser. And so without those funds. We end up with classrooms potentially that have to wait for projectors. Because they may break and we can't replace them ahead of time or we can't replace them in the moment. So there's a delay in terms of being able to get that in place. Ideally, we're replacing those proactively before they break as opposed to waiting. Right now, we wait until they break for the most part. Although at the elementary schools, our PTOs do help us because they are allowed to purchase that as part of the equity policy. At, I don't even want to think about. Network equipment failing because that is a much harder thing to replace quickly. I would say that right now, just to give you an indication, on the VoIP side, we are hoping to do Brown next year and to convert its analog system over to VoIP. That phone switch, the current one that they have that's analog, I think has. Had to be reset twice this year because it is getting old. And so it requires some work in order to keep it up and running. So that's, that's a level of thing I don't want to have to deal with. So that has to be replaced next year and we will get there. I think we'll get through the next two months, but that's, there are some examples, right, of where we are in terms of keeping that infrastructure going.
Okay, to HK me and probably my colleagues and community. What's the possible percentage of one-time funding in your total budget and outside funding? Give us a little bit indication so I can think through.
It varies from year to year, but in the report you have, I do indicate what, what we've funded from one-time funding or from, you can look for ARPA, you can look for Esser, you can look for E-rate, which we will. Always be able to get as long as the federal government funds it. So that's not so much as one-time funding unless the federal government cuts it off. Although we are hoping for E-rate that they will actually add cybersecurity to the list because right now you cannot get reimbursed for cybersecurity stuff through E-rate or discount there. So I, I don't know. I would have to do the math and add it up, but if someone could add up some of those numbers quickly, you'll see. I think the very last line on most of those items says it's from the IT budget and the rest are usually outside funds. So you can, you can take a quick look there. But there was a lot of money in this year's budget that was one time.
That, that's I'm thinking, but if the real like you push you a little harder to give me a rough percentage wise, could it be ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent?
It varies from year to year, but I could, we could look back and get you that. I can look back and get you it. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I can, I can get them back to you.
Because I want to understand the severity of this so-called one-time funding and, you know, outside funding. So to understand if. Five percent or less than ten percent, that's one thing. But if it's over twenty percent or thirty percent, then you have to think this is a huge.
I think for this year's budget, it is over. It's probably closer to fifty percent, but let me, let me get those numbers for you.
Okay, okay, thanks.
But I would say, I mean, there, we never turned down one-time funding, right? And one-time funding is a good thing to use for IT because it's also not staffing, which would, you would have to then pay for every year, right? So, but it's, it's that predictability part that, that's hard to take when you've got to figure out what you want to replace when.
Thanks.
Thank you, Anping. Any others? No? Well, thank you very much, Steven and Eileen and Tomas and Jack. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Appreciate it.
Right, I'm just going to stay to get the next presentation queued up for you guys.
Excellent.
Hello. Good evening. Hopefully, I won't be taking much of your time this evening. This is really more of a formality through the Mass School Building Authority.
You are Donna Dinesco?
I am. I am sorry. And I believe Steve Brown, who's the Onus Project Manager, is here. Great, thank you.
Steven's doing a bit of double duty right now.
He's triple, yes. Great, yep, we're all set. So Steve Brown is with us this evening as well as Josh Morse. So I believe everyone received just the really small packet, a simple memo, just giving a highlight of. Pretty much why we're here tonight. The Mass School Building Authority, who's our partner for the countryside school. Is requesting a vote from the school committee to support the four hundred and sixty-five student enrollment. You pretty much did that by supporting the educational program back in December. But they just would like a vote to officially approve the enrollment for four hundred and sixty-five students. Nothing has changed before you, on these slides is just demonstrating twenty-one classrooms for grades K through five. There we go. And then the overall gross program and grossware footage has also not changed. From where we were preliminary design programs. So. We were stating that we'll be having an overall program for fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight net floor area, which is the program space inside the building. For grossware footage of seventy-five thousand five hundred gross square feet. So. We are preparing to submit the preferred schematic report to MSBA, the PSR, which will support the vote and approval back at PDP. And so MSBA would just like your support and your official vote to endorse the four hundred and sixty-five student enrollment.
Great. So I think I can speak for all of us by saying that we are elated that this project is going forward, that our voters have greenlit the funding for it. And then specific to Donna's presentation tonight, any questions or comments? Mayor Fuller, go ahead.
Donna, good to see you. Are we anticipating a stride-type program at all at countryside or not? What, what are we thinking? This, a spark, a spark. So is that included in the twenty-one classrooms or is that an additional twice second?
It's, it's additive. We have a lower and an upper that's located under special education.
Okay.
So those are additive.
So it's twenty-two classrooms.
It's twenty-one, twenty-one gen ed classrooms and plus the two sparks.
Plus two, so twenty-three classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller. Any others? Okay, so where we go from here, we'll be voting on this on the twenty-fourth, I believe. Yes. So thank you so much. Thank you, Donna, and thank you to the team remotely. Josh, I see you. Thank you very much. Bye, everyone. Alright, let me pull up my next bit of notes. Back up, we've got Steven Retendi.
I think Kathy will probably kick us off now. Get the presentation up.
So in, in light of, you know, a longer-than-not presentation, a lot of information in areas of. IT, information technology, library services and non-instructional areas in our operation. I know that the school committee knows and certainly the public that is tuning in, I know that I have again been talking about our goal. Was to maintain the current level of services provided to students and build a sustainable budget over time. Although we're unable to maintain our current level of services, we are committed to building a sustainable budget over time. And again, this evening, you will hear presentations, the, you know, budget drivers. Again, I'm not going to go into them this evening. Truly, you look at the last arrow and the failure of the operational override. Is definitely a challenge as we work through this budget. And we will talk again tonight about added fees. We will talk about the reductions about for. Over four million dollars, four point three million dollars, and you can see why that was truly impacting this budget. I've really gone over the slides, Stephen. So what does our budget support? And again, I'm not going to read each of these, but again, looking at. What you're seeing this evening, we're talking about integration of technology into our classroom instruction, including funding for the one-to-one device program. We're talking about reliable and secure network services and operations. And I'm glad, Paul, you made mention of that earlier with the previous presentation. It is something that we had a presentation on much earlier in the year. And that was a focus, understanding the impact that could have on all of our services. Also, you'll hear ongoing support for building projects, maintenance, food service and transportation programs in this evening's presentation.
Alright, it's me again. Hello again. I think I do this every, the last time I did a presentation, I did two as well the same day. I think I, I just like getting them over with on the same night. Works well. Alright. So welcome. This slide you've seen before. It outlines the major changes and impact of those changes on the department. I will go into more detail about these changes in the next couple of slides. So I'm not going to specifically read them here, but we'll, we'll get right into the details. So the very first thing is just an overview of the department and what we do. You've already met some of the team earlier, but we really do, the, the left-hand side of this slide. Is our people and the right-hand side is the stuff. So on the left-hand side, the very top of that is our instructional side and coaching, where we have our library teachers and our instructional technology specialists. The library teachers are K through twelve and the instructional technology specialists also work K through twelve, supporting staff on the integration of technology in the classroom. Tech solutions and services, those are our tech support. Those are the ones who work frontline with people. Our network and media team, which deal with things like all of our network stuff as well as installing and maintaining projectors in the classrooms. TVs in spaces like this and, and other, other related items. Database management team deals with our databases, which we have many of and the. Um, database management team, uh, deals with, um, our databases, uh, which we have many of and the integration of those databases in particular. Uh, they all need to talk to each other as well as they possibly can, um, and that team is, uh, responsible for that. Um, on the software, hardware and related services side, this is our, um, stuff that we buy, uh, network infrastructure, phone systems, classroom AV equipment, computer equipment, software licensing, repair and maintenance. So a lot falls under the information technology department. Um, and as mentioned earlier and in other presentations, there is also funding in other departments that support information technology, teaching and learning, purchases, software, um, and, and other, uh, department budgets also will, will support various software. For example, HR has aligned for some HR software, uh, that, that supports our human resources functioning. Last year, uh, we did cut staffing and so I wanted to highlight this on this slide, uh, we cut, uh, 1.0 out of our instructional technology specialists. Uh, we cut a 1.0 out of our network media team and we also cut point seven out of our library teachers. Um, that was kind of split between secondary and elementary due to enrollment changes at the elementary, uh, secondary, it was a, a cut overall. And what we have on the proposed table for this year on the staffing side is a cut of point eight library teachers. Um, we, we don't have too much more we can cut from our ITSs and our network and techs, tech staff, uh, since we already took those cuts last year. Uh, so right now we're, we're focusing on library teachers, which also is tough to cut, um, but it's the one place that, um, out of everything, we could, we could find some, some room there. Um, so let's go a little bit more into the library side and what that, uh, looks like. So enrollment adjustment is point one FTE. Uh, you would think we would be cutting more given the amount of classes that we are losing. But the way the library teachers work at the elementary is they teach a range of classes for every FTE, for every point one. So an example here is that a point eight FTE allocation, uh, is 19 to 21 elementary classes. Um, so if you are at 21 right now and you cut from that down to 20, you don't lose an FTE for that, uh, just the way the ranges have worked out. Um, we have a, uh, I believe it's, I believe it's Memorial Spalding, that's at 19 and will be going down to 18, and so that's our point one cut in library, uh, that will be happening at that one school. Uh, uh, we also are going to take a look at our high schools and cut point seven, uh, from our secondary. Um, so, uh, but the big impact here is really at the two high schools at, at North and South, uh, which currently, uh, North has 2.4 FTE associated with their library. Uh, Newton South has 2.2 FTE and we're going to bring both down to 2.0 library, library teachers. Uh, so that's the big cut there. Um, last year, we actually did do that first bullet there, which was central high school cut of point one FTE. But we also lost an elementary classroom over the summer and so we have kind of put that back because that teacher was already expecting that, that point one. Um, so this year we're just gonna essentially take back of that point one that we, we did not end up cutting in the end last year. So what does that look like? Uh, library teachers at the high school, uh, teach classes in collaboration with classroom teachers on research, presentation skills, um, and other, uh, related items. Uh, they consult and instruct with small groups of students and individual students. Uh, they manage the library collection and non-print resources. Uh, they act as resources for teachers, um, as teachers plan class activities and projects, and they supervise students in the library spaces. Uh, they have a lot of responsibilities. They don't have direct classes that they have on a regular basis, but they are constantly having students come through the library um, to, with their classes in order to, uh, make use of the resources in the library. Um, and both library spaces serve as a good, good spot for students during the school day, uh, when they, um, either have a, um, no class during a particular block, um, uh, the library spaces serve as a resource there as well. And many students will go in there and complete projects, do their work, um, sometimes just, just relax when they need to, um, grab a non-fiction book, grab a fiction book, um, and just read. Um, the decrease in the staffing will result in, uh, less of all of the above, um, and in particular, the number of classes and students that can be instructed by the library staff on any given day. Other changes and reductions, um, come on the software side, um, and, and, and as well as one other area here. Uh, we will be eliminating licenses for a program called Seesaw, which we are currently, uh, paying for, for grades one and two. Uh, that's $10,000. We had bought that for grades K through two during the pandemic. Um, we had reduced it to just grades one and two, uh, this year, um, and the use isn't there as much as we would like. Um, and so for $10,000, um, it's probably, it's one of the first things on my, my list that we would have cut, uh, just based on use. Uh, we can reduce, uh, licensing, oh, and Seesaw is really, um, it's, if you are familiar with learning management platforms, it's kind of a good learning management platform for the younger grades. It also acts as like a portfolio for younger students. It's got a lot of great features uh, for younger students, um, but, uh, the use just isn't, just doesn't justify it, given the budget cuts that we have this year. Uh, we can also reduce our licensing for WeVideo. WeVideo is an online video editing platform, uh, which melds really well with Chromebooks, um, which are a web-based platform, uh, but when we, we, we had reduced licenses since the pandemic, um, and looking at our overall usage, uh, we can reduce licenses more, um, and that's one piece of software that we can also cycle licenses in and out. So if it's needed for a class project, we can, we can add students and then we can take the students away, uh, so that we've got flexibility in terms of how we use those licenses. So that's going to be a minimal impact. We're going to reduce licensing for Zoom as well. We have less and less of a need, although we still have a need for Zoom, so we'll keep, keep some licensing there. Um, but we will reduce it overall. Um, it may mean, uh, that we won't be able to run, uh, as many webinars. We have two webinar licenses this year. We'll probably cut that down to one for next year, so that may just limit the number of, of webinar licenses we can use in particular, and we'll have some additional meeting licenses as well, uh, to accommodate need there. Um, and then we have this one stipend line of 15,000, uh, which has supported, uh, summer intern, uh, for the IT department, uh, that has helped us get, uh, things ready for the school year, uh, there, an extra pair of hands to complete projects. Um, and, and it's also funded some of our summer PD, uh, so funding some of our instructional techs specialists to work over the summer. Uh, so that's, that's cutting that line item as well. So that's prob, that's probably the biggest impact in terms of, um, uh, dollar amount that, um, is used well, um, and that, that, that we don't have as much flexibility with, uh, as we do with some of those other licensed areas. And one-to-one, so this is the one place where we grow, um, and so let's talk a little bit about that. Uh, we currently have $200,000 in the budget associated with one-to-one, uh, that was funding the high school program before COVID hit. Um, that did not fully fund the high school program. We were still adding additional money from our budget, uh, partially because, um, devices get more expensive and that budget light item didn't increase over time. Um, so, uh, this is an additional 190,000 to help support the one-to-one program. So what do we do with that? And I'll, I'll remind folks just a little bit of, of how we use the one-to-one program, um, at the high school right now. Every student in grade nine through 12 gets a device, um, and then at grades three through eight, every student gets a Chromebook. In grades one and two, every student has an iPad. At the elementary school, those devices stay in the classroom and they go home with students starting in grade six. Um, and in the elementary, uh, kindergarten classrooms, uh, we do a one-to-two, uh, so there's one device for every two students in the classroom. We had talked earlier in the year when I did a presentation and you heard from stu, from teachers, you may remember the video that I shared with you that had a lot of teacher voices in terms of how devices are used. Um, in the elementary schools in particular, uh, those devices are often used during centers, um, which is when students are in smaller groups and rotating between smaller groups. Uh, the teacher may be working with one group separately and the students are rotating through other groups. Uh, usually when you go into those classrooms, those centers are not like one student sitting at a computer and doing work. It's usually four or five students in a, in a center and they are talking together and doing work together. And those laptops, uh, of the, the iPads and the Chromebooks during that time is often guiding that student work, uh, while the teacher is now available to work one-on-one with another small group that they all cycle through. Um, so that's, that's one way that they're used at the elementary school. Uh, they're also used, um, to, for writing, uh, and research. There is research out there in terms of how well, uh, uh, the Chromebook increases quantity of writing. Uh, think about how much more you can write on a device than you can write by hand. That's one way. We also use it to increase access to materials. Uh, think speech to text, text to speech. Um, there's, there's so many ways I could mention it there, but there's just a few of them. Um, uh, there are ways of also providing alternative assessments to students, uh, instead of traditional pen and paper tests. Uh, students are creating videos, blogs, um, podcasts, uh, they're capturing, teachers are able to capture students reading books, so they can actually hear how they are pronouncing words, uh, which you can't do for every student in the classroom, unless you actually can record their voices and then listen to it later, and the devices allow students, teachers to do that. Um, so there are just some highlights of some of the ways that we use it. The impact of this additional funding is that it does increase our total funding for the one-to-one program to 390,000. Um, I outlined in the presentate, in the document you got earlier, and it's also here, uh, that with, um, going to BYOD in grades 11 and 12, we would need about $600,000 annually to support K through 12. So this doesn't get us completely there. Um, we will have enough devices, uh, to keep the program in place for next year, K through 10. Um, and that still gives us time to evaluate whether or not at the younger grades, we want to keep forward, going with, with iPads. Um, I, I personally think we should, uh, but I think that is something that we should talk about and have a conversation about, but this doesn't get us completely funded. Um, so that I think is important to note here that we still need more, more dollars towards this program. A question came up the last time about if we're cutting also instructional software out of teaching and learning, does that mean we still have software that's available to use on these devices? And the answer is yes. Um, so this is just a screen capture of, um, iPad screens and the software we have available. Uh, we are a Google for workspace, workspace for education school. All the core apps are available and usable on an iPad. We have all of the inherent iOS iPad apps, um, that are available as well. We don't let kids use all of them, uh, but we have them use some of the core ones that they can make use of, um, for, uh, learning, um, and for showing their understanding and for getting content delivered to them. And then we have third-party apps as well. Most apps on an iPad that you actually install on the iPad are one-time purchases, uh, so we don't have to purchase them again and again every year. Uh, some of them are subscription-based, where you do like Brain Pop, uh, Brain Pop Junior. I circled those two in red because that was on the cut list from, um, teaching and learning. I circled Seesaw because that's on my cut list. Um, there are free versions of all of those, but they are more limited. Uh, so Seesaw in particular is used by upper grades, um, in various places. I know one middle school teacher, uh, that uses Seesaw with their classroom and it's the free version. Uh, but we will still have access to quite a few, um, apps on the iPad that can be used to deliver content. Same thing with Chromebooks. Uh, Google for Education is a big deliverer there. We have Schoology, which is our learning management system, uh, which is, um, of one of the, the key pieces of software that we use. Um, and then you can see the plethora of other, of their software here. Some of these are library, um, TumbleBook, PebbleGo, um, um, are, are, are pieces of software we use, um, through our library as well, as well, sort of. So, and this is just a, a sampling, right? Like any web access, accessible device has access to a lot of content on the web, um, that we can make use of on a daily basis. Alright, so there, we can talk a little bit more about one-to-one when the questions come up. Um, I want to just address a few more things that are additions to the budget. Um, a, a big push, um, in the district over the last couple of years has been data analytics. We've talked, um, here, school committee has mentioned this numerous times. Um, we are, uh, we are ready, uh, to actually lay down some money to purchase an analytics platform. Uh, we've been hesitant in the past because we have not found one that has met our needs, um, and we think we finally have met one that has met our needs. Um, and so that, that's a $50,000 expense to provide, um, district level, teacher level, um, and school level data, uh, to educators, to administrators, um, across the district. And then $10,000, which is still modest for cybersecurity, but it does get us a little bit more. Um, I envision that use, being used for consulting work, uh, and for training of our IT staff to better meet, uh, cybersecurity needs. Uh, so that will be supplementing, uh, some of the other things that we are doing as well, like the municipal cybersecurity awareness grant program. Um, and, uh, as it always does, the FY24 budget will also continue to support some network upgrades, um, as we can. Um, we have been doing most of the VoIP out of our budget and we will continue to do so. So as I said, I think we will, we'd be, be able to pull up around next year. Um, if we can, depending on the total cost of that project, we may do an elementary school as well. Uh, we have really one elementary school left, I believe. Um, and then we have to go cycle back and do some classrooms, um, with, with VoIP. Um, because there are, there are three buildings where we put VoIP systems in, but those classrooms did not have classroom phones and we did not add classroom phones at that time. Um, and so we have to really go back and do that at some point. They all have systems that will call the main office, but they will not go like directly out, um, from their schools. We also hope to start doing some replacement of wireless network at the elementary schools, uh, because theirs, their, theirs is also aging and showing, starting to show its age. Continued challenges are the same ones I talked about earlier, which is replacing classroom instructional equipment and replacing network equipment at a comfortable rate. And that ends that part of the presentation, so I'm, um, open to taking whatever questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Uh, I'll look this way first. Go ahead, Rajiv.
Thank you, Stephen. This was, uh, very thorough and helpful. My question is about the high school library teachers. Does the, the, the change in, in FTEs reflect a, um, a decrease in capacity? At, at any given time or a decrease in availability in terms of hours that someone's available, or, or is it a combination?
It's a combination of both. So, uh, right now, there's at least a little bit of time when you may have three library teachers in the building at a time. Um, that doesn't happen very often because it's only 2.2 at one and 2.4 at the other. Um, and so that allows you to potentially teach two classes and still have that supervisory aspect and the ability to work in the main library space. Uh, when we go down to two library teachers at both schools, you still need to keep that main area supervised well, um, and have someone accessible there to work with students one-on-one in small groups, and you may only be able to teach one class, um, at a given moment. Um, so, so it does decrease the amount of classes that can come into the library.
Thanks, Rajiv. Any others? Go ahead, Kathy.
So my question, Steve, was about the hybrid, uh, the high school library teachers too. Do high school library teachers do wind blocks?
Um, that's a good question. I believe they do. Um, so I don't know how that will impact what, when blocks though. Um, we probably would need a high school, uh, principal or Toby to, to help answer that question.
Is your library, oh?
I, I don't know. I mean, are you, you're, you're still either.
Yes, some of them do wind blocks. Um, they have different, there were different topics, really creative topics that I know, uh, I was hearing about at South and I know Aaron Dahl Beck over at North also had some too, so.
So.
To the impact, I can't answer that right now, no. Sorry.
Yeah, I was just curious about if they did, what the impact on wind blocks would be.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I, 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 that's right. I believe at South, I remember them doing book groups with kids during wind blocks, which is, uh, and they probably did the same, similar things at North.
Thanks, Kathy. Any others? Go ahead, Paul, and then Aunt Ping.
Thanks, Tamika. Um, I just want to, again, apologize for not being here at the last meeting, which might be why you were able to end so early. I have a few questions. Um, Steve, on, on the, um, the iPads for the youngest grades, you've got a replacement uh, projection of 300 devices per year or $140,000 per year going into the future, given the normal lifetime of, of iPads and so on. And that's with one-to-one in grades one and two and two-to-one in grades ki, in kindergarten. What, what was the status quo ante bef, before we did this program? How many iPads would be in a kindergarten class?
We had five iPads, um, in most kindergarten. Well, yes, we had, so elementary in general, K through five, had five devices in every classroom and then they had carts of devices that they could bring in. So usually that translated into five iPads in grades K through two, um, as well as a, usually we had one, um, iPad cart as well in every building, uh, so that they could bring in more devices if they needed to.
So that would have been three or four-to-one at the time, basically, given the classes. You know, Tamika, at, at two meetings ago, we talked about the one-to-one program and you, you used language like nice to have versus must-have or something like that. I have to tell you, I'm in a different camp when it comes to kindergarten through, grade two at least, that I don't think it is a nice-to-have program. I think it's, um, I, I think it was a decision that we fell into without a thorough rigorous evaluation of what would be accomplished. But tell me I'm wrong about that. What are the evaluation endpoints? You, you talked about in a few years, we might decide not to proceed with this, given the costs and benefit. But what are we measuring there?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, what, a couple of points. Um, one, we're not new, I would say the country is not new to one-to-one, right? So one-to-one was new for us, um, but it has existed in other school systems previously, um, and has been researched. Um, so we can actually take a look at some of that research at some point, um, and share it out with you as well. Um, in terms of one-to-one at the elementary classrooms, I think it does come down to, will we get the additional funding in order to support it? Um, and therefore would that funding support the benefits of it? I actually want to look at whether or not we can move Chromebooks into some of those grades as well because they're cheaper. Um, but in terms of, um, effectiveness, I think we look at student engagement. I think we look at, um, how students are being able to access the content and is that, uh, being accessed in easier ways? Is it meeting the needs of our diverse learners, um, in terms of our ELL population, in terms of our student services, uh, students that need things presented in different ways? Um, is it providing the multimodal capabilities that, um, a traditional classroom and traditional resources can't do? Um, as well as providing, uh, I mean, I think of, I think of things, uh, as my former career as a math teacher, and this is high school, but I can think in the elementary school as well, uh, being able to present concepts in ways that you would not have been able to do it without technology. Um, illuminate concepts, um, at, I can talk about the high school classroom more easily, uh, but even when you start talking about the elementary classroom, um, you can do things with manipulatives in the classroom and we do, we don't replace that. Um, but there are things that you can do with technology, uh, that just make things easier. I mean, I can think about my own, I, I was watching kids do, um, it's may have been third grade and not K through two, so it, but it's close. Um, they were making, um, bar graphs, um, pictographs, um, much easier with technology than it would be to actually draw those out by hand. Um, much easier with technology than it would be to actually draw those out by hand, right? So there are things that students are doing with technology at different grade levels. Uh, the technology just makes it easier. Um, and makes it quicker and you can fork focus on the concepts. One of the things that I think we heard from some of the elementary teachers, including um, a K through two teacher at the presentation earlier in the year. Was that they actually now can spend less time teaching the technology. Because they're using it more frequently, so the kids are used to the technology. And now the technology is focusing on content use as opposed to teaching the technology. Um, which is what we used to have to do. So if you bring in a, a, a card of, of iPads to do a project with K through two. You spent a lot of time teaching that technology over and over again because the kids weren't on it. Um, now they are, and now they can pick up the iPad and focus on the content that they're learning and not on learning the technology. So I think we're going to look at student engagement. We're going to look at who's accessing what better now. And we're going to look at um, the number of students that are able to engage more thoroughly with, with their learning.
Well. I'm sorry, but I, I don't think that's a responsive answer to the question I asked. You talk about making it easier to use the machines, to do bar graphs and so on. That's not an educational objective. An educational objective is. I would think actually learning the material, not learning to use a machine better. And what, what I haven't seen, whether from you or, or any of our senior administrators. Is the discussion of the educational endpoints. Not the use of technology endpoints. These kids are going to learn to use technology anyway. Half of them have cell phones and. The fact that they're facile at this is, is just part of what society is. We're making a budgetary decision here. Of a hundred forty thousand dollars a year just for these machines, not counting. Other aspects of this and coaching and so on. At the same time, we're cutting kindergarten aids. And I think it's reasonable for us to ask the question. Which provides more educational advantage to our children? Having those kindergarten aids versus having iPads. Just starkly put. And I don't think the Newton Public Schools has made the case. For the one to one program at this age level. It's probably different at every age level. And yes, you've talked about research that's been done elsewhere. There's also research that's been done elsewhere. That suggests that the use of computing technology like this at lower grades is not. Advantages for the learning process. To the extent you're advocating. So, um, but I don't know how to get at this, truthfully. If, 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 if the school department isn't willing to establish endpoints. And report them to us on what they're actually achieving. Then we are left with a very crude choice between buying iPads, buying Chromebooks. And laying off staff. And, and so that ends up with someone like me, probably, making a motion. To discontinue this program for the lower grades. Again, on the basis of incomplete knowledge. And I think we can do better than that.
So that won't have any budget impact next year. Because again, we're not fully funding the program and we have iPads that will actually allow the program to continue into next year. So, so we, we would be supporting the Chromebooks because those are the ones that are actually going to expire quicker. Um, so uh, like you, you can, if you cut the funding now, you are cutting funding from a program that is not fully funded to begin with, right? Um, so just keep that in mind, right? Um, and I would say that we should talk to the teachers, uh, that that's your endpoint about the impact in the classroom and how it is actually affecting student learning.
I love to talk to the teachers.
Sorry.
But it's not an endpoint.
If I may, uh, your question is a reasonable one. And I do believe Stephen was very responsive to your reasonable question. What I heard him say was that we will um, evaluate. The endpoint, as you termed it, over the course of the next year where the program is fully funded. That, and he gave you a few points of. I would say anecdotal at this point data as to how our in-classroom instruction are utilizing the technology available to them. Heard that. He referred to an earlier presentation where we had elementary teams talking about the ways in which. They utilize technology for their students. So it's not that it wasn't responsive, it's that he doesn't have all of that data in front of him now. But I did hear an acknowledgement that that is something that would be good for the school committee to have. And that this program was funded through next year. Approximately funded. Close enough. Go ahead, Cole.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's going to be hard.
You were rebutting my question, Madam Chair.
I wasn't rebutting your, I wasn't rebutting your question, Paul. Let me ask, are you finished? If you are not, please do conclude.
I think it's perfectly obvious that. Teacher satisfaction might be one endpoint. But student achievement is the one we're trying to achieve. And there was nothing in Steve's response. It was a very good response in other respects. But it didn't get to the heart of the matter as to how we would make a decision. And what he's laid out as what's being collected as information is not going to help us make the decision in the future. I'll let it go with this.
Thank you, and go ahead, Cole.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to be really hard to track endpoints at those grade levels about the use of technology. I mean, again, you come back to like, are you going to take the technology away from certain classrooms in certain schools and then compare those groups? This is so integrated into, into the system that that kind of an endpoint is going to be very difficult to, to, to figure out. Um, I also think we don't have an endpoint in the effectiveness of kindergarten aids either. Um, I think that one of the ways to get at that as we move forward. Is to do some types of studies that at least track usage of the iPads. See what time is spent on, on, you know, on, on how they're being used. And somehow try to figure it out from that perspective. I mean, you're not going to find that. You know, unless you take the iPads away from certain classrooms, you're not going to be able to see a difference between those classrooms and other classrooms. I mean, I think you just, you, you know, we don't have the design to do that. So I think that looking ahead and really monitoring for. A year or a month or semester, whichever, how those devices are being used. And I think that would help the committee understand that. And I think there's always a fear that the technology is being used as a babysitter in the classroom. And that's what we need to know, that that's not what's happening and that teachers are using it. You know, and I, I see it every day, you know, the differentiation, especially with English language learners, the ability to have translation in that classroom for that student. Of course, I'm working at older grades, not at a K two, but I, I see some of that subtlety that, that. That I think that if you could illuminate for us next year by tracking that would be helpful for the whole group.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cove.
And I think if we have aids in the kindergarten classroom, we also need to track how they're being used because I think that that is also something that's. There's a range and it's important for us to understand that as well.
Well, but thank you. Um, so I think maybe to these last two points, if you could talk a little bit about the, the data analytics software. Um, that you've greenlit for the next budget. And that was working in consultation with our incoming superintendent. Is that correct?
Um, partially, we'd already been thinking about that um, for a while. Um, and actually that decision probably would have been, would have gone through regardless uh, for this particular, particular line item. Um, we have, um. We, we have been working the last couple of years on collecting data. What we have not had is a good way of summarizing and presenting that data cleanly. Uh, both to teachers and to administrators in the district. And so that's really what the analytics platform will do for us. It will. Take all the data from all of our disparate sources, put it into one system that we then can do comparisons for. We can look at. Um, i-ready data in comparison to attendance data. We can look at i-ready data in comparison to MCAS data. And we can do that more cleanly and more easily. Um, so that's what that will end up doing. It will also tie in with some of our. Uh, we, we've have a, a, a grant for SEL in case you could. Did you mention the SEL grant before? Um, there's an SEL grant which will bring in um, some additional work for some uh, SEL stuff. And it'll be able to bring in some of that data to be able to compare to um, some of our academic data as well. So it's really going to be a, a warehouse where all that data can sort of be uh, placed and stored. And then uh, displayed out in various ways for comparative purposes and to figure out where we need to support students better.
Good. I saw some hands over here. Go ahead, Rajiv, and then I'm Ping.
Switching topics a little bit. Are we seeing any pricing benefits for, for devices? Because the, the previous time you had to make a big purchase, every school district in the country was trying to buy the same devices.
School districts are still trying to buy devices because many school districts are still trying to keep one to one going. Um, so that's still an issue. Um, I, I think inflationary pressures in general are affecting everything in IT. Uh, it's not just devices, but also software, software licensing. Um, I think, uh, I think we, what was it? It was ten percent? Was that the, the, Renee? What was going up ten percent? That was New Zella, which we're not buying, um, right? Uh, so um, I am seeing similar, similar things on other software, um, and, and, and so I'm expecting that we'll see that in Chromebooks as well. Um, I don't think we'll see as, as big of a jump, uh, but we won't see ten percent on Chromebooks. Uh, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's anywhere from two to five percent uh, per device. Um, but, but we'll see. I mean, that, we all, we go out to bid for those, uh, so it is a competitive bid process, um, which makes it. Um, a, a little bit easier to get lower pricing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. On Ping and then Chris.
First, a comment, um. I, I think um, Paul raised the issue, uh, probably we need to really um, deliberate a little bit more. And uh, I think Cove, you mentioned, you know, more uh, data to end it. To, for, for further analysis and, and Tamika, you seem to agree. And probably I'm thinking, uh, it's, it's. Put a little bit of pressure on Steve because a, as a director of technology and library services, you are not really. You know, you don't have the capacity or resource to do much data analysis of. For, for the younger students, whether uh, uh, this technology really helped. Or probably in other way distracted a bit. There seems there's some literature around saying, you know, people are still wondering whether at this young age, when the technology really helped. Uh, so I certainly would support, you know, if we, you're talking about data warehouse. To see we have more data and someone could help you. Because this takes some time to do data analysis. And you know, you need a lot of design to see what kind of data you can analyze to see. Whether the technology, the computer really has the positive impact. Might be very challenging, um, but I'm curious and, and I anxious like to see that.
So the number of variables in educational research are tough to control, right? So trying to, to, to narrow down on one, one cause for improvement can be difficult, but.
At this young age, even more challenging now, uh, because there's so many variables to influence this learning outcome. But, but still, this is a good question and I think uh, Paul raised a good issue, you know, it's educational issue. And we, we need to think about that. Um, my quick question is on the other end for high school, uh, for juniors and seniors. And you mentioned that now we encourage them to bring their own devices. So mostly try to save some budget, I assume that's for financial reasons?
It, it's for, yes, and I, I would say it's a, it's actually a. One of the reasons why we had thought about that. We thought about that before we actually need to do budget cuts. And the reason why we thought about that is because at the end of every year, we have students that are bringing devices in as seniors and saying. I need to find my device because they've been using their own device already, right? So we have plenty of evidence of students who are actually bringing in their own personal device anyway. So to me, this one's good fiscal responsibility. We have plenty of students that are using their own device and have their own device. So I'm not going to keep issuing them a device that they need to just hold on to at their house uh, for two years, right? Um, so, so to me, this one, this one is, is as much as that, you know, we talked at the beginning of the year and the, but could be any of the budget process about also being fiscally responsible. And making sure that the things that we are doing um, are actually making sense based on what's happening in reality. And we know that students in grades eleven and twelve, and even some in nine and ten are bringing their own device in. Um, and if we didn't have that MCAS hold there about using device for MCAS, we may look at nine and ten as well. Uh, but for eleven and twelve, we know that we can get a good portion of students who have their own device. Um, are using their own device. I walk through high school classrooms, I see Macs, I see PCs in the classroom um, all the time. Um, and so it, it really is that, that. One, we do have this budget constraint, but two, we have the reality of what's happening on the ground, which just makes sense to, to make that transition. And I'd say a lot of students are making that transition anyway because they're heading off to college. After senior year, they'll need their own device. There, there's lots of things there um, that just makes sense for the students. Um, so it, it's, it's, it's both makes sense and it does help us save money.
So again, I'm asking you a question, the uh, percentage wise. So roughly as, as far as we know, how many students bring their own devices?
When I did a survey of students earlier this year, a couple of months ago, I believe it was around seventy percent of students said they had their own device that they can bring in. Uh, we have a parent survey that's currently out there on a couple of issues and one to one and bringing uh, the availability of a device to bring in is also part of that parent survey. So we can get a sense there as well. Because one of, one of the things I, I fear is that the student says I have a device I can bring in, but mom and dad say, I don't want that device going to school. So that's why we're asking parents the question as well.
Well, now the, the, the related question will be. You, you would repair if they use school devices, if something wrong, but if their own devices, you will not have any manpower.
Correct. And if, if a student breaks their own device, like it's accidental damage of some sort, they do pay for it. Even if it's our device.
Okay, okay.
And if they break their own personal device and they need to borrow one from us to, to do their schoolwork, we, we can, we'll, we'll be able to accommodate that. That's why I still need to leave in some devices for grades eleven and twelve, both to accommodate students that need one because theirs is broken. But also if they just don't have one, we want to make sure that we, they can have one.
Uh, do you have any, I, I'm just curious, do we have any equity issues here? If students bring, you know, devices which fancy, I don't know, powerful, whatever. Uh, or this is never issue at all.
So to me, the key part there is what the teachers are asking of students. And if the teachers are asking of students, those things that can be done on the device we're giving them. That's the, that's the bar that I would set, right? They may have a personal device, they can do a lot more than that. But we are only asking them to be able to do X level. And that's the, that's the level that our device can do that we give the students. Um, so that way we'll control some equity, but remember, we already have stu- students with their own personal devices, right? So that's already in existence, that, that inequity. Uh, but what we ask students to do uh, for classwork and for their curriculum is based on the device that we would be able to provide them. And, and, and that's, that's, I, I would say a Chromebook is a pretty low bar in terms of capability. So most students will have something better than that. Most students aren't going to go out and buy their own personal Chromebook if they can just get a Chromebook for school. But if they want a full laptop, then that's what they would buy.
And you cannot really control about that, just, I'm sorry, let me finish the last question. So there's no way you can. Control if students bring and they have all kind of uh, software in computer.
No, and they're already doing it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, On Ping. Go ahead, Chris. Go ahead, Chris, and then.
Gotcha.
Or Kathy and then Emily. Yes.
Understood. Um, so I, I, I personally would like to see the, you know, some of the data that, that Paul and Cove were talking about. Um, what Cove was, you know, kind of going at with the utilization kind of is what jumped in my head. Um, in terms of what we really need to see in determining, you know, should it be one to one or, you know, should we move to something more like the old system? Quick question on BYOD again. Do we have a BYOD staff? Uh, program? We do not. Is that something that's implementable?
Uh, we, we haven't considered it. Um, I, I don't know. I know a lot of staff members that don't have their own device that they could bring in laptop wise, so I, I'm. Uh, but they could bring in their own device. And I guess if someone had their own device and they wanted to use it, we have had a couple of cases where we haven't issued them a device. But we've had very few of those that actually have happened over the years. But we could certainly.
Okay.
Look into it. Um, I think there's a couple of things that are a problem with that. Some of our internal network systems, we would have segregated from their personal device. Um, so we have, we have two different sort of VLANs in the, in the district and most personal devices go on one VLAN. And your school network laptop device goes on another. So I think there may be some technical things that they would not be able to access with their personal device, but we'd have to figure that out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Kathy and then Emily.
So um, my question sort of picks up, I think, on something On Ping was talking about. I remember a couple of years ago, we were talking about buying sort of two flavors of Chromebooks, one with touchscreens and one without touchscreens. Sort of, I guess my question is, where did we end up on that and is that a potential equity issue if we're? Because I remember a discussion about teachers being able to require different things of students based on the touchscreen or non-touchscreen capabilities.
Yeah, and, and when we first bought them at the high school, they were all touchscreen and they were tablets. They would flip around and you would be able to use it as a tablet as well. Um, that feature wasn't as popular, so when we bought this year's Chromebooks, they're still a touchscreen, but they don't have the tablet mode, so they don't actually flip around. Uh, we'll reevaluate this year and to see whether or not the touchscreen is actually needed. I actually think the touchscreen could be more useful at the lower grades. Um, rather than at the upper grades. Uh, so it's something we'll reevaluate and we reval- reevaluate every year. That adds about, it could add anywhere from fifty to a hundred dollars to the device, uh, depending on the model that you buy. Um, so it would save us money and we'll, we'll look into it again this year and see if we can either just go all, all non-touchscreen. Or if we do touchscreen, do we phase those in at? Or if we do touchscreen, do we phase those in at lower grades where that tech tactile pushing of a screen is a lot easier sometimes than manipulating the mouse? Track that.
So that, that makes sense. I, I guess my concern is more on the, maybe more on the equity side. But to the extent that where our teachers are going to be requiring that functionality, that that may be something that people bringing their own device may not have.
And, and it hasn't been an issue, I would say. Um, I think most teachers are not requiring that. And MacBooks never come with a touchscreen because Apple has said we're not putting them on our devices. We only put them on our iPads, um, and we have students bringing them in and are not at a disadvantage.
Thanks. Thank you, Kathy. Go ahead, Emily.
Um, this is gonna be quick. I just want to make a comment, actually, um, I am not an expert in curricular delivery pedagogy, I guess is the best way of me to put that. Um, I'm not, um, but I just want to elevate something that you said because I think it's important, which is the concept of access. Cause that was in one of your responses, you talked about access particularly for students who, uh, may have special needs or the ELL students. Um, my two kiddos with dysgraphia, so technology was essential even at that time. Um, and that, that's just, I think that's important to keep in mind when we have these conversations. And I'm also looking forward to some of the data that, um, COVID requested.
And I think one of the things we also have learned over time is that many of those, uh, tools that are used by students who have a, a, a clear need have also been adopted by students who don't have as clear of a need and they have been beneficial to them. Um, and so, uh, that universal design aspect, um, comes into play as well. And so being able to have that, have those tools available and learned by students, um, no matter who they are, um, it can be, can be quite beneficial to students.
Thank you, Emily. So, um, final thoughts from me is just as we're looking to reevaluate over the next year or so. And we're deciding whether we're going to partially fund, fully fund, maintain, scale back, whatever, what have you. There are a lot of legitimate questions that we as a committee should, uh, consider. And you as educators should also be considering, and it sounds like you're doing just that. And so kind of putting our, a, a schedule out there for how we go about doing that work over the next year or so. That would be really helpful, I think. Um, cause I remember, like many of my colleagues, I remember pre-pandemic hearing discussions about, um, you know, teachers kind of struggling with how am I going to use this device in class? What, what, um, lessons can I adapt and craft to it? I think a lot of those answers have been, um, realized through the pandemic. But it really is a, it's a question and it's a continual kind of process of making sure that the devices are being used to the best of their ability so that our students can learn to the best of theirs. And so I, I hear you and I, 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 I believe and I trust that you are doing that work. It's just a matter of us bringing into, um, the conversation of when, when we're going to get those updates and, and really kind of be keeping an eye on when we have to make those decisions going forward.
Absolutely.
But anyways, we appreciate it. This was a really good presentation and a good update. Thank you very much. All right, up next, we have Liam Hurley, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Financial Administrative Officer for the Business Finance and Planning Presentation.
Evening, everybody. Uh, I'm also going to be joined by, by Sean Mannion and Alyssa Behringer as well, uh, I think online. So, um, I've got a pretty long slide deck here, a lot of this information you've seen. We're going to spend a good amount of time on kind of some of the, the non-salary accounts, just looking at those, a lot of these, again, we've been talking about. I feel like we've been talking about this since October, so a lot of this is not new to you, so I won't go into all the detail. Uh, with Sean and Alyssa here though, um, really anything in the budget I think is, is open. So if I don't cover it, feel free to ask it if there is some good probing questions, we don't have any answer to, we'll certainly get back to you all, uh, on some of those. So, um, I just wanted to start with basically with the, with the staffing and the non-instructional. Um, these are all folks here at the Ed Center, really around the, uh, Business Finance and Planning Team. We, we do call it BFP, so if you hear me use that term, BFP is, uh, is that one, and then the HR department. So in the BFP team, I just wanted to kind of quickly ju- to show some of the, some of the FTE and also just talk about some of the impacts, uh, where we're going to have that. So just starting up, we've got, uh, a payroll of 2.6 FTE, that's actually going to be down point four. We've had a retirement, we're going to be reducing that by about point four, uh, in the FY24 budget. Data analysis, planning and project management, that's 2.5 FTE. Um, that's Katie Hoag, Stephanie Gilman and Julie Athena Saez. Um, that's an area that I know that I'm, I'm thinking about, I know our incoming superintendent is thinking about in terms of FT for the future for that. That's an area I think there's certainly keen interest on, on the school committee's part and on our part, um, to potentially add staffing over time if we're able to. Um, finance team, I've included myself, Sean, Alyssa, and this is actually a budget add, a, a new financial analyst that we've been actually looking to do uh, for the last several years, um, just given kind of requests and some of the pieces that we want. Accounts payable, that is 2.0, that's actually reduction of 0.5 for the FY24 budget. Uh, purchasing is also a two, uh, 2.0, that was previously a split position, so it was 0.5 AP and 0.5 purchasing. Um, we had a, um, a, a change, somebody moved up into the, uh, full-time purchasing position, so we kept that vacant all year. Um, so that would be a reduction in purchasing and accounts payable of, of 0.5 each. Transportation, um, Regina Moody, Transportation Director and Kristen Korea, uh, have an assistant, uh, in that department. Uh, and then business operations headed by Amy Mistro, uh, with 3.5. Um, then we certainly have the HR department and I'm going to kind of get into kind of some of the roles that, that all these role, um, have. And I know that Martine has given some updates with HR, but they've got 7.4 FTE, uh, on their side. So on the non-instructional areas for BFP, kind of the three big buckets that we think about are fiscal management, uh, planning and support services for schools. So the fiscal management certainly involves budgeting and fiscal projections, which we're in right now. You know that we get a, uh, almost a, a monthly or at least every six week, um, fiscal update to folks in charge of payroll. We've got a, a massive payroll that, that we're responsible for, I'm very proud of the payroll that we do, that are very minimal errors. We have an audit process for each payroll that we look at, um, our accounts payable, uh, team, purchasing grants, revolving accounts. These are all the funds that we get in, uh, revolving accounts basically allowable, um, under DESI rules and investor laws, uh, to allow money to accrue and actually carry forward in the next year. Um, our fee management program, um, and certainly legal compliance with state reporting and audits that we, uh, that we do. Um, our planning, um, school facility planning, our enrollment analysis and projections and our long-range planning. And then our support services for schools, uh, facility maintenance, sustainability, food services and transportation. Those are the main areas. I think there's more even than that, but those are kind of the main buckets that we put these in. HR, I won't read all these, HR really has a lot on their plate. Um, they manage the recruitment, the retention and then hiring of all staff and really provide a personalized approach to that. They do a great job, uh, in terms of trying to meet the, meet the needs of, of, of all of our staff and all of our, our potential staff coming in. Um, this is just a list of some of the things they do, but they certainly collaborate regularly with the bargaining units. Um, they manage all the benefits, uh, for our staff, uh, and many retirees as well. Uh, license, license, uh, compliance, uh, and then certainly if there's any leaves of absences as well. Uh, and then accommodations for employees. So there's just, there's a myriad of things that I'm not even going to get into here with HR. Uh, but they really are, uh, yeah, here to support our staff. I'm shifting a little bit this kind of, uh, on BFP, um, in terms of our long-range planning. I think this is a key piece for us, is just think about our build, big building projects and what we support there. Stephanie Gilman has done it, doing a great job for us. Um, think about that along with the city public buildings. The top section here is certainly the complete, completed buildings, we're really proud of, um, Andrew Zervis Cabot Oak Hill. NECP just moved in in January, as you all know, nice little picture there, uh, of that ribbon cutting, thank you mayor. Um, in progress, and I would just point out that there are a few asterisks on this. Lincoln Elliott is still on tap for, uh, September 2025. Horseman, the mayor and executive team and the school department are working feverishly on Horseman to keep that on track potentially. Um, at the end of my presentation, the mayor wants to speak anymore about that, but we are keeping it on there right now for September of 2026. Um, to hopefully have that addition renovation, uh, project, that timeline, it's possible that could slip a little bit for, but for right now, we want to keep that on there. So again, there is an asterisk, it says depending on funding availability, final design in a few pieces, so please, please notice that. Um, countryside that we just heard about, September 27, Franklin, September 29. And then in Ward Underwood, and again, multiple asterisks there. Um, you know, we say early 2030s, we're going to be, we're just kicking off actually an internal group tomorrow. Uh, and we're going to be coming forward with the recommendation of school committee next December, so that's possible. And again, part of those recommendations, hopefully we'll also have some shorter term recommendations as well. So that 2030s is really just a place marker, that really is subject to change as well. So, uh, in terms of, um, BFP, in terms of some of the changes, uh, that we're thinking, that we are, uh, recommending to the school committee for next year. Um, the first is under facilities and that's a reduction of two custodians. Uh, this will be one each at North and South on the, uh, what's called basically the third shift or the night shift, um, that they've got there. Um, we would be restoring on a positive side, be restoring the charter maintenance budget. If you recall, as part of the one-time funding plan, the city took on $410,000 of our charter maintenance. We still had projects that we did, it just came out of our budget, we're putting that back into the budget in, in this FY24 budget. Um, and then certainly, and this is just a big enough number, I just want to put in there that we obviously have to, to, um, account for the increase in the higher utilities budget. That's a real big piece and it's a hard one, uh, for me, just because it just, it just, it irks me that we've got to go up that much in utilities. But the rates are going up and usage is up, um, and as much as we've been working on, um, you know, solar projects, LED projects, um, you know, sustainability initiatives. These rates, um, with the companies are, are still hitting us, I think you all can probably sense that with your own bills. In terms of impact on these things, certainly at the high schools, and it's not massive, but that would pretend with, with the, with that overnight, uh, one less at each school. Um, would have a minimal impact in terms of, um, uh, less frequent cleaning duties at each of the high schools. So there's a, there's about seven or eight at each of the high schools on the overnight, be one less at each of those. So the ability to get to each of the spaces in the school will be impacted. Uh, restoring, restoring the charter maintenance certainly provides flexibility. I'm going to talk a little bit about charter maintenance and I think, I know that's a topic I've brought up. We're still not going to be fully, you know, funding truly from my perspective where we need to be at, at charter maintenance. Uh, but we are at least bringing that back, um, and certainly talked about the utilities. Second piece from an administrative, I talked a little bit about this on that, on the, on the chart there. So reducing 1.5, uh, administrative assistance in the BFP team, but adding, um, a 1-0 financial analyst, which is really, really needed. So this is a really restructuring, uh, we're taking advantage of some vacancies right now and, and trying to basically become as lean as we can. Um, I think it's worthwhile pointing out on administrative costs in the end of your report in terms of how we compare per pupil. I think we're 14th out of 15th in, in terms of administrative costs, things like school committee, um, business finance and planning, assistant superintendents, HR, all, uh, compared with across other districts. Again, we have many, many more sta- many more, um, students, but in terms of a per pupil, we're, 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 we're pretty lean, um, from that perspective. And then number three, Stephen talked a little bit about this, but we've added some funding for some tools to operationalize district vision, increase community engagement, date and strategic plan for better student outcomes, that's really what it's all about. There are some things that the incoming superintendent is going to be looking to kind of operationalize. And so we wanted to put some money both into the school committee line item and the superintendent line item from, you know, consultants or really software perspective. Um, so I think it's going to be exciting, um, for us to look, think about. And I think there's some, uh, certainly, uh, you know, and I know Kathy's been working on some of the, kind of the data dashboard and what we're going to be looking at that. But I know, I know Dr. Nolan's really going to be taking it to the next level and I just wanted to make sure that there was some, there was some funding there, um, that she was able to, uh, to take advantage of. So really the goal there and the impact is the support for data different driven approach to clarifying, uh, our vision for student achievement and success beyond graduation. And then the last one, and I'll show these, uh, this fees, and we've been talking about this elsewhere for some times, increasing basically all user fees. Um, this does need your approval, this would be something that I'd actually would ask the school committee, not tonight certainly, but, um, in the near future too. If they are amenable to, um, um, this, and again, certainly you can make any, any change or, or change to, to the recommendation I have on that. But would be hitting the, um, the families, uh, the override did not pass. Um, talking Regina, we, I should have gone back a little bit, um, a little bit just digging, but it was probably five years ago. Um, we believe we hit transportation from about 320 to 350 and athletics also went up above $50. Although that, that was about five years ago, that was the last time we had any fee increases. Um, certainly there's a higher fee burden on families and this has a potential of, 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 um, you know, reducing participation. I think you've heard me say it and we certainly want to make sure that no student is denied the ability to participate, uh, for any financial reasons. And so we, and we do have a generous financial assistance, uh, really is always available. So we're going to really, you know, continue to try to make sure that, that the families and students know this. Um, but at the same time, fees i- i- in some ways have become for school districts a necessary evil. Um, they, they offset our expenses, our expenses continue to grow. And when you don't keep up with those expenses, uh, a- after time basically becomes less and less of an offset for your budget. Um, so this is a bit of a reset for us and again, open to any comments or, or, or feedback on those fees that we're going to show. So right into the fees, um, I hopefully this is, it's still a lot of numbers. I, I don't, I, I can go through each of these, but essentially we're, we're, we're looking at 50, uh, for the most part, $50 increases for a lot of our programs, so the all-city chorus and band, it's currently a hundred and 50. Now, the proposed fee would go up to $200. Uh, the bus transportation, that's 350 currently in a $700 cap, so two, two, two students, uh, recommending a $50 increase. So 400 and an $800, uh, cap on that. Um, going down the line, elementary band, an orchestra, another $50. Um, the early morning program is something that, uh, as to our memory, we have not changed that, that's $12 a day. This is for families to access about 55 minutes in, in the morning. Um, this has been a, a, a good program for our families, which typically staffed, it is staffed by Newton Public School employees, many times aides. Um, in our buildings, um, and we're recommending going up to $16, uh, a day for, for families. So that is a bigger percentage increase dollar-wise, not massive, but still does represent an increase, uh, percentage-wise. Um, the early instrumental music program, we're certainly, you know, I know that's one of the areas, uh, that we're going to be talking, you know, that we have as re- recommendation for a reduction. Uh, that would be a $50 increase, high school athletics, high school drama, you can see all these, I don't need to read the, read all of them. Just down to what's called a family supercap as well, and that really is kind of a cap, uh, of a combination of things. It doesn't include, includes most of all, all these, it doesn't include things like school launcher, NECP, um, uh, programming. But a family, uh, would have, you know, basically they had, they had a number of students participating in a number of, of activities, uh, that they would be capping that. I, I'm recommending going from 15 to $2,000, that's a $500 increase, which is substantial, uh, I realize that. Uh, we've estimated these increases to help offset our budget by approximately $650,000. Um, that is something I certainly want to track and I am aware, um, that, you know, it is possible that if you do have recruit, uh, reduced participation, which is really not our goal, that you'd have, you would run the risk of actually getting less of that fee revenue. But again, the hope would be that, that financial assistance will certainly apply to families, um, that are there. In one of the Friday packages, I did send around a fee comparison, I don't have it here, I did send around a fee comparison in many of the districts. Uh, we would be trending, we'd be in the middle for many of these, we'd be trending up on the upper side, uh, for our athletics and our bus transportation. A couple of districts are higher than us, there's some 500, 525, uh, bus transportation in some neighboring communities. Um, many of them are 300 and below as well. So, uh, we're, we're starting to end up on the, on the upper end side of, uh, of these fees. Um, so that is the, the proposed fee increase, again, I'll get through this, we can come back to this, I'm sure there'll be some questions. I'm just going to go through, I won't go, I try not to read each of these lines, I just want to review some of the major, major non-personnel expense line items. Um, that we're going to have in our budget again, this is, uh, this is something that I think has been, is, is a change for us in terms of an increase. We've really tried to hold steady in this area, so this chart really shows, uh, the impact of these non-personnel categories. You can see utilities at a whopping 25%. Uh, that, that hurts, that's a big increase for utilities, that's, you know, mainly electricity, gas usage. We're only down to oil right now, it appears, so it's pretty negligible, um, usage, there's a goal certainly to, um, to try to get that off electricity at some point. Um, you can see our maintenance going back up, one of that is attributable to bringing that $410,000 back. Contracted services going down, Casey spoke a bit about that. Um, tuition line item, we've, we've talked and I have a slide for each of these, so I won't read again all, all these items. But, uh, bottom line, um, going up almost $5.3 million, almost 18% in, in, in our expense categories in our budget. This is just a look back, um, this is budget to budget, um, at some point, maybe I should, I, I should probably try to make this actual to actual. We could do that, but I think it's just interesting to see how steady it has been or what we've had to do at this 31, um, 30 to 31, 29 million dollar range for the last five years or so. And in FY24, that, you know, really the levy broke, we could not, um, sustain that. And what we had done, and I don't, I didn't highlight it, but really what we had done, that tuition line item, the middle line item is really where we had used one-time money over the last three years to basically help balance our budget. Um, certainly ESER, ARPA, the city funding, all of these things, and I will talk a little bit more about one-time funding. But that's the line item that we kind of, kind of manipulate, um, up or down, um, to, uh, help us, uh, keep our expenses down as our salaries and benefits have continued to rise. Um, I think it's important to note that our, our expenses now are going to be about 13.2% and, and salaries and benefits are about 86%. Um, and that's down from almost 89%, that's something I think is, that, 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 that we're all aware of, that, that expense. So given the reductions in staffing and given the increase we have in our, in our non-personnel expenses, there's, there's a shift there, uh, bringing the expense, expenses up. Uh, and bringing them, the, um, salaries and benefits down a little bit in terms of a percentage of our overall budget. Just going to hit a couple of these utilities again, $6.3 million, um, it's a, a, a 1.27 million dollar increase. Natural grid gas, almost $800,000, a 50% increase, uh, in, in the. Natural grid gas, almost eight hundred thousand dollars, a fifty percent increase in the FY twenty three budget. And this is what we're getting. We work with the city. Bill Ferguson does a really nice job. They go out and try and solicit and try and get, you know, most aggressive quotes. I think we were locked in for several years, and this is almost catching up for having such a good low rate. So this is an eighty four percent increase in the supply rate for us for natural gas. Similar phenomenon in electricity as well, fourteen percent, fourteen point six percent increase there for that. So city still hopes to do some future solar projects. It seems to me the reality is that that doesn't, it's certainly the right thing to do from a from a climate action perspective. But it doesn't seem like it may be materializing in terms of additional savings for us. You know, next year, we Stephanie, maybe Bill Ferguson could come in and report on kind of this this additional phase three. I'm not sure we're calling it phase four. There are planned solar initiatives even over the next year, the year and a half that we've reported on in one of our facilities reports. But it's, we're not really seeing a net savings with those at this point. So again, we're going to be committed and we'll continue to look for any ways we can save money on our utilities. This is just a graph of the utilities doing pretty well for a while, and you can see it, just see the spike in FY twenty four. Solar gas and electric supply rates and usage really kind of coming back to pre pandemic numbers as well. Maintenance, this is a really broad bucket. It's not just under the facility department. I believe we maintenance includes some of the, some of the areas in terms of information IT that Steve was just talking about. We've also got some cleaning, stowed supplies and even vehicle maintenance. We've got a couple of vehicles that are out there just doing our just box trucks we may need to maintain as well. As I talked about, the four hundred and ten thousand dollars is restored in FY twenty four. I'm really happy about that. Ideally, I would have liked to actually have that grow at at about three and a half percent, but we just weren't able to do that, just given the budget that we're in. So the but the four ten is fully restored. And really, the the idea that I talked, I said, I wanted to come back to is the charter maintenance, about three point five million dollars. And that's kind of three large buckets, custodia supplies and equipment. MEP, as David Stickney likes to refer to it, mechanical, electrical and plumbing repairs and maintenance. And that's been an area that in kind of before, before the pandemic, we were approximately a million dollars or so in each of these, in each of these buckets. The MEP areas has ticked up and is closer to one point two to one point three million dollars. And that's also just given the nature and aging of our buildings. Stephen talked about aging equipment. I know we've talked about some some failures we've had at buildings and sometimes end up resulting in, you know, even having a a school day closed for a day. We're doing the best we can to maintain these buildings, but these, some of these buildings are certainly, you know, have, you know, are aging. We need to keep updating these buildings and and, you know, David and team, even working with the with the city departments, really working in terms of proactive approach to this. But we are still reactive in many ways, particularly with some of the MEP issues that we have. And then lastly, summer projects, again, that was an area that we used to spend, almost we would spend, try to spend about a million dollars. We've had to bring that back down to it's close to five or six hundred thousand dollars. And what we've really had to focus on are more life safety, stair improvements, access. Areas versus what I'm going to say some more cosmetic type things, locker room improvements, things like that. So that's summer projects as well for next year. Given the expenses that we've got in the charter maintenance, where we have been typically five to six hundred thousand dollars over budget. Is an area, then I'll talk a little bit about some of my own goals in terms of thinking about a sustainable budget. We would like to bring charter maintenance up over time. This is in the year we've got a reduction of fifty six FTE. This isn't the time to to bring that back up, but it's an area that I, you know, I'm going to continue to talk about, and it's something that's critical for our schools. Contracted services, five hundred seventy two thousand dollars is supporting students with special needs. This is a reduction that Casey talked about here. Six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars is for outside substitute vendor. And this is level funded from FY twenty three. And I mentioned, we are increasing the school committee contracted services for some district data and analysis tools. Again, this could be some some community engagement. This could be something that we might look at as for portrait of a graduate, and this also be something for strategic initiative. So I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be able to give you specifics on that, but I wanted to have some money in that in these accounts that 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 we're able to fund these. An overall reduction in contracted services of ninety six thousand. Tuition, we have really obviously been been talking a lot about this, and you can see the gross side of district tuition is fifteen point two. This is a real big increase for us, and I've been really proud that we've the last ten years, it's been closer to thirteen million dollars. This is a combination. This is really a lot of the that that rate increase, the OSD rate increase that we've really been been driving home. You know, I I applaud Kathy Smith in terms of superintendent Kathy Smith in terms of trying to the advocacy at the state level. We'll see where that is is going to go. So our gross tuition, so that's the total amount that we're projecting for next year. Remember, that's offset and that's offset by a few things. That's offset by four point eight million dollars in expected circuit breaker funding. Our total circuit breaker is actually higher than that, but we use some of that circuit breaker to actually offset direct staffing as well. So the amount that we use for tuitions is the four point eight. And then we are, as you folks know, we are still relying on one time money. This is two million dollars of planned circuit breaker money, it's planned money that we would have in FY twenty three. I'm confident that we'll have two million or actually even more than two million at the end of the year, but right now the goal is two million. And if we bring that, if we ask for more money, it just means more one time money that we would be having to rely on, we have to make up for in the future. But we are still balancing the twenty four budget, two million of of Kerry Ford from FY twenty three. And then also, and we've talked about this, this is a generous gift from the the mayor, the one point four million dollar circuit breaker bridge credit. This is one time money. The thought would be that circuit breaker, which is trailing a year, so in FY twenty five. The school department should be receiving seventy five percent of the cost of our twenty four expenses. So as those big increases are felt next year in FY twenty four, in twenty five, we should get the benefit of of a large circuit breaker as other districts will as well. A lot of the advocacy around is help us help, you know, Massachusetts, help us in the FY twenty four process. You know, all districts are feeling this. Some districts are are projecting this to almost be almost two percent of their entire budget, just the OSD rate increase alone. For us, it's under one percent, but we're a larger district, so it's really a big, big hit that that districts are facing with this, and it's really a budget buster. So then final net out of district tuitions is seven point three. We do have some other tuition expense items. We call it tuition tuition assistance. This is actually where we we have in the contract. We basically reimburse staff for getting educational attainment units, so a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars that's in the contract. And then we send a few students who are very lucky. I think we do send a few students out. We do have a career in tech school here in Newton. A few students go out of district. That's a budget at about a hundred and ten thousand and some of our summer tuitions. Just speaking the career in tech, it is interesting in another district I was in, there was a line item of almost three million dollars just sending students to Career Invokes Tech School. And then it was several hundred thousand dollars to transport those students as well. So I think we're really lucky. It's one of the great offerings I think that Newton has in our program. Here is just a kind of a graph in terms of the out of district tuitions. You can again see the the blue line is the total number of students. We are projecting a slight increase for next year. We'll certainly report on that. I think some of the thinking is that with the increased. There's some demand for students to be outplaced. We've not been able to place some of those students, but with their with this OSD rate increase, that some of the schools might have some space for these students. But you can see how steady as well, when I mentioned where we've been, it's been in this kind of twelve and a half to thirteen million dollar range, almost all the way back to FY twelve. And it's kind of gone up and down, and you can see that ma- massive spike here. Again, that's the gross, that's the gross tuitions that we're showing up at that fifteen point two for FY twenty four. Circuit breaker, carry forward and building sustainable budget. That's something that Kathy's talked about. So in in our current FY twenty three budget, as a reminder, just to flashback. Where we were needing approximately almost four point six million dollars in one time funding. That was made up of a combination of things that we did. We were as creative as we possibly could be to to get that. I could go back and look at this, but we had Esser funding that we used. We use city one time funding to actually offset basically COVID expenses for us. We were, and then also relying on our own carry forward to to basically fund that. So that's a real problematic for us. So in order to build a sustainable budget over time, we need to reduce our reliance on that one time. We're still planning two million. I think we have a goal of trying to get off of that in the future of needing that one time money just to balance our budget. I, you know, ideally, and just speaking openly and candidly with the school committee, I think we'd all like, and myself included, would love to have some reserves. And some protection, even of unforeseen expenses, and there are unforeseen expenses that hit all districts. Some of the areas we'd like to think about are kind of building reserve for legal settlements. We do have a line item for legal settlements. It's not a lot of money. There are some some ideas that I have about potentially thinking about that. Love to build a reserve on anticipated out of district tuitions. I mean, there is something called a special education stabilization account. It's something that works kind of like a rainy day fund for some school districts. It would go into kind of a city fund. We need authority of a of a city council to actually access that funds, but it is a, it is a mechanism that some districts employ. So if they were in a situation where we're experiencing this this giant spike in out of district. And if the mayor's office wasn't giving us the one point four million dollars, we would be scrambling. This would be a chance that we could, we could go back. So, you know, I don't know what OSD will do again in the future. I don't, I think they'll think twice about thinking about a fourteen percent rate increase. But it would give us some flexibility if there was even a large move ins or rate increases to do that. And then lastly, thinking about how we can build up that charter main charter maintenance account. That's something that, again, that we've had to, when we go over, we've got to basically move money or transfer money from our accounts to cover those expenses. Transportation, almost eight point nine million dollars. Yellow bus is approximately three point one million dollars. That's offset by with the with the proposed recommendation, almost nine hundred. I think it's about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fees that we would be having. That's up a couple hundred thousand dollars from what it was. We're in year two of five with our contract with with Eastern Bus. We certainly have been experiencing additional McKinney Venthens foster care reimbursement, excuse me, transportation. We've actually just recently requested of the city almost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of of reimbursement, so we'll be getting that this year. So we do get, we we do expend money, but the state, and again, it's a lagging, will be reimbursing us for a portion of not all, but a portion of those expenses. And I think the state is aware of those costs and is going to be looking to to try to help districts with that. We have thirty four, what we call in district buses. Two of those buses, so two out of the thirty four are also used for private schools within Newton. So we transport students. In the same manner privileged that we transport a regular elementary students. We don't have to transport students outside of Newton. But if a student is in Newton and go to an approved private school, we basically grant them the same piece. They also have to say this, pay the fee as well, similar to our own, to our own students. We have eight buses for for part of our Boston Mecho program. Those are all fully funded by the Mecho grant. And what we had done the last couple of contracts is we've actually been have the benefit of those Boston buses. If they drop off, we're then actually able to do what's called a shared route within the city to do, to help us with some of our runs here. Special education, transportation at five point five million dollars. We did go back out. That was a twenty percent rate increase. I don't think that's a surprise, given the cost of of transportation, of of, you know, fuel was up, cost of their vans. And really, I think it's really more of a labor issue. I don't think there's a van you can see that doesn't have a, you know, help wanted sign on right now. So they're in need of of staffing as well, and they they're looking to to raise their their rates for what they pay. So that's a large budget increase. This one, and again, we can come back to this one, but I think it's worth putting on. There's some other transportation considerations for this, for the committee, and this may be really over time. But it's something that I think I really would just implore us to continue to think about. We do want to explore electric bus opportunities in the future. Our vendor Eastern actually did apply, and they they worked with their manufacturer. To apply for some of the state grants are out there. They did not get into the first round. There are more rounds coming for that. It's a little bit complicated. Newton, as you know, we do not own our own buses. We don't have the fleet. We don't have a garage. We don't have a yard. So it's, it would be complicated if we applied for the grant. Who's actually going to get that? Who's going to take ownership of these electric vehicles? We've looked into this, and there are, we have signed up actually for a grant. With the state that actually helps just with thinking about implementation. So we've actually even just signed up for a grant. We haven't received a response back yet, but we've actually signed up for a grant to say here, here are how. Kind of contracted services, communities can actually, you know, implement this. So it's something that I'm aware of. I think it'd be something nice. It goes, it goes hand in, hand in glove with a bus depot. So we certainly right now, our vendor leases the two spaces. At some point, those spaces will not be available for them. And, you know, we've looked, we've looked over multiple years to think about different areas. It's a real challenging thing. They need, you know, it's almost fifty buses. In total, which includes a couple of spare buses. And that's a real challenge for us to keep in mind, those buses to pay an excise fee into the city of Newton, so if they're gone, they wouldn't pay that. I also think it would potentially, so there would be savings that that our vendor could think about rather than paying rent. If we were to provide that could lower our our rate. And I also think it would have the benefit of attracting potential outside vendor. We've not, in the last couple of bits, we've not had any other vendors bid on our bus. And a lot of that is real estate. No other vendor can come in and say, I can give, you know, I can find a space. Our parameters do not require, they have to be in Newton, but I think we ask within five miles of Newton, and that's very difficult to do. And last consideration, just to to talk about a little bit, and I brought this up at another meeting, was just thinking about what are our state, what's the state law say around transportation? And the state law says that we have to transport students that are in kindergarten to sixth grade that reside two point zero one miles or more from school. So at most of our elementary schools, most of our students reside under two miles, and again, it's from their assigned school. We have many elementary schools, and for the most part, if you look at the map, and again, it's 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 not complicated, but it's it's gone commonly traveled path. So if there's a, if there's a back dirt road, things like that, that may not technically count. But for the most part, many, many students, this, if we were to do the state law, instead of needing thirty four buses. Regina and I have estimated needing only six to six to eight buses. We would need some still in sixth grade for for potentially Brown and Oak Hill. But that would be a major savings to the budget, but it will also be a major disruption in the city. I would think that that would create a number of challenges for families. You would likely not have very many buses at all for our elementary schools. You would not have any buses for our high schools. There would be increased traffic. I think we know what that's like, particularly around around our schools at arrival and dismissal, and certainly, you know, potential safety concerns. I throw it out there in terms of just thinking about it. It's something that we could explore further. It certainly has a a massive, you know, budgetary impact to us in terms of of thinking about our our budget. But it is something most school districts like us provide much more greater transportation services than what's required in the law. That's why we charge that fee. That's why that that fee is is important. So again, we'd be getting some of that feedback and that two point one million dollars. That I think that would probably, that would, remember, we would lose any fee revenue. So if we got rid of the, if you just went to the state mandate, you wouldn't have that nine hundred, nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollar fee revenue. It would only be transporting students in K to six that live more than two miles from their school. So I'm throwing a lot at you tonight, but I just want to put a lot of these things out there. Supplies, two point three million dollars. This again is a large area for us. It's an overall reduction of a hundred and fifty seven. And a lot of that is really attributable to kind of the teaching, learning that Renee talked about in terms of some of the the areas. And particularly, you know, we're some of the software items going down ninety six thousand dollars in student services, twenty twenty two thousand dollars. Equipment, overall increase of two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. Again, this is a kind of a large kind of bucket of of areas that we put in there. PCR wear, software, office equipment, classroom furniture, facilities, equipment. Main increases really again due to the the one to one program. We have, I'm going to call it restored. We had decreased the elementary per pupil in the FY twenty three budget. Enrollment had gone down. We took a, we took a fifty thousand dollar reduction there, but it really is not sustainable. Some of the schools in in October, November were already quite low. Most of our elementary schools have between twenty and thirty five thousand dollar kind of a a per pupil expenditures. They use that for instructional materials, supplies, some PD. It's really there, really only almost their own discretionary funding that they have at each, at each of our schools. The middle and high school are level funded. We didn't, you know, ideally, we would probably increase those for those schools. But we we kept those, we did not, they were not experiencing the same kind of level of of difficulty as some of our elementary schools were were feeling. Sorry, I went the wrong way there. Athletics, this is actually a slight, it's a little bit challenging to look at. It's actually overall. It's a slight increase, but it's actually actually after taking a decrease. So we took the decrease after we increased them. We're really seeing, we've been reporting to you folks that athletics had really been going up. If we were not to make any change, we would have needed to increase the athletic budget by several hundred thousand dollars. Their cost of coaches, the cost of transportation, leave fees, rentals, everything has gone up. And we needed to think about increasing that, so we're going to be working with Toby, with 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 our athletic directors. Michael Jackson, Pat Gonzalez, they've got some ideas on how to do this. Again, majority of their expenses are are coaching and transportation. So it may mean some less, less coaches. It may not mean having as many assistant coaches. From my perspective, not ideal, but that is kind of part of the process in terms of thinking about across the board reductions. Couple of other key, and I'm getting, I'm getting near the end here, non instructional programs. That I just want to kind of make, you know, that you're aware of, but just to kind of, just kind of keeping on it is, you know, our grants, almost eight point seven million dollars. That that's not including circuit breaker. So four point seven in federal funding, three and three point seven state, and then some local new schools foundation. Kind of grant that we have. The majority of our grants, really kind of two major grant kind of areas is entitlement grants and competitive grants. We get the majority of our grants are entitlement grants. It's just by being Newton, being our demographics, we get that. Other districts with them, different, different demographics actually get much larger proportions if they've got higher demographics and and low income. They may get, you know, bigger portions of of certain things. But our, we're pretty steady and our projection is pretty steady in terms of our entitlement grants for next year. But our, we're pretty steady and our projection is pretty steady in terms of our entitlement grants for next year. And then we have applied, you know, thank the, some of the teaching, learning and Amy Mistro for some competitive grants, and we got almost five hundred thousand dollars in competitive grants in twenty-three. And as we said, the, the main entitlement grants, IDA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Title One, Two, Three, Four, all expected to be relatively stable for next year. Food services, there's a lot of wording in here. We've certainly just, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's really important to just stress that we've had universally free meals here in Massachusetts. That's still currently, there's a, there's a. The uh Governor Healy has put in uh some funding to, to have that budget continue. I personally think it'd be great if this continued into the future. I think this has helped A with our, not on just our bottom line, but really actually increased participation. Students know they can come in and get at least the first meal free. It's important to note second meal or any other card items, they do have to pay, but that first meal um is free. There's some other bills out there, food services and a hot topic and, and you know, and Amy can talk about this. We originally had three slides on this and I, I, I pushed Amy to get this down to one slide. But it is a, it is a big piece for us. Remember, we don't, we, we do have about thirty-five thousand dollars in our budget. Um, that's to offset any, any bad debt. School districts by law are required to actually offset bad debt, and we can, even though there's universally free meals, it's possible for families still to accrue. Uh, a balance, negative balance they may be doing. I was one of those students where I might be getting a second meal or third meal in an all-a-card item. So it is possible. Um, if, if a student doesn't pay, they would be, uh, they would be ringing up a negative balance. But again, food services is ma- is, is essentially self-funding and really credit Amy and the Witten's team. We will be going out to bid, I think, as a reminder, next year. For our contracted services, but that's been an, that's been a, a line item that, that is now uh fully covering its, its expenses. Benefits, uh, just wanting to show kind of this graph in terms of what we're projecting for next year. Uh, our health insurance and I, I know the mayor at some points can be talking about some of the plans for health insurance. Next year, there will be a change in our health insurance plans, but we are still projecting a five percent rate increase on our current rates. Why it's a four point one percent is that we are projecting obviously less staff with the, with the budget. So this is, you know, um, it's a four point one. The Medicare payroll tax, we have to do that. We have to have a certain portion of, of, of taxes uh withholding Medicare payroll tax that the employer has to pay. OPEB in here at three point, almost three point two million dollars, a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar increase. Medicare Part B reimbursement. And here a small increase, but still almost one, three, six, three uh for our Medicare reimbursement. Dental insurance, pretty steady there. Workers' compensation at four hundred thousand dollars and unemployment is actually showing a decrease. It is an area that we've gone back and forth. We feel it's a competitive market. It's a very strong job market. We thought about increasing that, given the, to some of the reductions we're going through. We've not been hitting this four hundred thousand dollar mark right now. And I think we took some risk on this, but we wanted to take some risk in terms of thinking about staffing, be able to get jobs um if they are uh reduced here in public schools. So just kind of some net budget adjustments. I think Kathy may have, may have shown this to you before. We had an original reduction target. Above about six million dollars. Uh, we've whittled away. We've worked with the mayor's office. We've brought that down. You can see where we've ended up here. This is elementary at about one point two, secondary sets, middle school and high schools, one point five, student services, one point one. Uh, teaching and learning in ELL, um, it was two hundred and sixty grand. IT and library is up. In this line item, facilities uh is down. A little bit in the system-wide expenses and benefits, certainly down two hundred and forty-five thousand, and then you can see that fee increase impact. So. Netting out to about four point nine. If you took the fees out, obviously closer to about four point three million dollars and, and kind of reductions, and it's aided by the, uh, the fees. And I wanted to pass it to Kathy to kind of think about, talk about some of the key issues we're, we're, we're monitoring and thinking about coming in the next year.
Thank you, Liam. Uh, that's a lot of information uh and certainly it's information we've been sharing for a while. So as we finish up our, our presentations on all our departments, I think there are some issues that. We have certainly spoken about uh as a central leadership team uh with our principals, our department heads. So these are issues we really will have to monitor. The impact right now of overextended remaining resources that we have, supporting ongoing uh student behavioral, social, emotional and academic needs. Looking at our rates of special education referrals and reliance on special education resources. Our district capacity to continue our systemic improvement work. Our educated wellbeing and retention of our staff. A recommendation of Ward Underwood, a planning process that is going to begin uh very soon with, I believe, scheduled for December twenty twenty-three with a recommendation. Possible changes to your health insurance providers in FY twenty-four. The impact of inflationary pressures on our costs, which we clearly saw that looking at over time, what that has meant. And last is unanticipated student needs due to new enrollments. I think we're open for questions. Um, I think the last slide is again. Our uh budget meeting timeline, um when we finish up this evening, uh Wednesday, I believe we're looking at the public hearing uh on our budget. Uh, Monday, the twenty-fourth, uh, our school committee will come together for a discussion on this budget. And a straw vote, uh Thursday, the twenty-seventh. And these dates are, I'm sure everybody realizes we have April vacation starting uh this Friday. On the fourteenth uh going through the twenty-fourth. Thursday, the twenty-seventh will be our uh school department, excuse me, school committee discussion of the budget and our final vote. And we are scheduled on May ninth and if needed, May tenth to uh make our budget presentation and answer questions to the city council.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Liam, and Sean and Alyssa, who I know were instrumental in putting these numbers together. Questions from the members. Go ahead, Paul. And on Ping.
Can we got questions on four separate things and I'm happy to take a break after each one if that helps the discussion flow better, whatever you decide. First, thank you, Liam and your team. I, I just want to, um. You listed all the bubbles around your office, all the different uh functions within the Newton Public Schools that come under your jurisdiction. And I just want to say. Been my experience and I know the experience of many people, that the performance of those offices. Has been truly exemplary in terms of the service they've offered to our employees and the public. And I just want to mention that and congratulate you and them on that. It's, um, it's a very fine team. They do really fine work. So, thank you. Let me start with electricity. Understand the general trends and I just want to dig down under that a little bit. And tell me if I've gotten any of this wrong, but I think I've got it right. In general, the city purchases electricity for all of the city buildings and all the Newton Public Schools buildings by. They put out a contract that has to meet the state's. Uh, renewable portfolio standard, which basically says, I think it's either twenty or twenty-two percent of the portfolio has to be green. We put it out for bids, we get a bid. I think it's provided by Constellation Energy at this point. And that includes virtually all our companies except N E C P because N E C P came in late in that process, right? So, and, and as their group purchase, they get a pretty good. In addition to that cost, we are assessed by the city. Oops. So in addition to that contract, which where we pay our share based on kilowatt hour usage. We also are assessed by the city, a portion of the cost of the renewable energy credits that the city has chosen to purchase. In order to um have a greener portfolio, right? And, and my understanding is that, that gets. That, that increases above the state mandated renewable portfolio standard of twenty to twenty-two percent. And gets the city up to thirty to thirty-two percent, more or less. Does, does that feel about right?
It feels about right. I'm not sure I'm able to speak in terms of city goals, in terms of those state, that state portfolio, but yeah, so we're charged back approximately sixty thousand dollars from the city on this renewable energy credit, but yeah.
So that's the way it works and that's where those recs come from. And, and we don't, do we have a role in deciding how much the city purchases in the recs?
I would say, you know, mayor, if you want to chime in on that, but no, I would say that we do not, other than really obviously trying to support sustainable initiatives, but no, we do not have, we're not at the table on that, on that.
So my understanding is that comes out of both actions by the mayor and the city coun- council in improving the climate action plan goals. I, I, I think that's where that comes. Then a very small portion of what we, what we pay for is at N E C P. Which because it couldn't be part of the constellation bid. Is paid for under the Newton Power Choice contract, right? And under, under that contract. Just like um all of us residential users, there's a choice to be made between the hundred percent green product. Default product that's eighty percent green and the standard renewable portfolio. Contract. And there's a difference in those prices. So my understanding is the. The hundred percent green contract is, is about fourteen cents a kilowatt hour. That's just for supply. That's not for delivery. And the, the standard one is about eleven cents. And, and we are charged for the hundred percent green portfolio for that. Now, is that our choice or the city's choice?
You know, so that's a good question. Alyssa or Sean? Do you have a sense in terms of where we stand with that, you know, that contract in terms of who placed us? I don't think we, we did not go out to bid on that. I think that's the city did that. But Sean or Alyssa, do you have any, any reaction?
I also believe that it was the city. Yeah, I also believe that it was the city that placed us uh where we, where we are.
Thanks. Um, moving to maintenance, if, that's all I had for electricity. Uh, on maintenance. You've explained the summer projects and all the other projects. Is the re- reserve in the, in the proposed maintenance budget for unexpected. Boiler breakage and stuff like that, or is, is that outside of the budgeted amount?
Good question. So, you know, when we think about the maintenance, we do, Paul, David likes to think of this three point five. He likes to think about uh, uh, about a million dollar. Per each of those three major items. So that would give you almost half million dollar reserve, but we have been eating into. Sorry, I'm just trying to find that, uh, that area on charter, charter maintenance. We have been eating into that. That amount with our basically reactive, uh, you know, areas. So. From his perspective, he starts, you're thinking he's got almost two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars of reserve because he's, he's bucketed. Almost about a million dollars each of these, but each of those other, uh, other areas, storage supplies and equipment, uh, the MEP reactive maintenance. May, you know, any kind of failures that we have in the building have been eating into that, into that million dollars. So we start out with almost a two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar reserve that he thinks about, but basically almost it seems by November, it's already gone. So I would say for all intents and purposes, there really is no reserve uh i- in all realistic, because we need to have, we actually need a larger budget. To, you know, if you look back and I think you, you have, we've really been spending five to seven, a hundred thousand dollars over in those line items. Salt is really not a reserve, but on paper, we, we try to start that way, but it's really not, 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 not there.
I recall the pattern from last year. Virtually every year we go over by, by some amount like that. So when that happens. I mean, you have to fix the boiler or you have to fix the pipes. Do you basically look at other line items at that point in terms of what hasn't been spent to the budgeted amount and then you, you reallocate? Is that how you handle it?
We do. I mean, it's a, it's a process. I mean, I would, you know, just step back and we will, I think, actually probably in the next few weeks, we'll also show you folks, I think, an updated C I P. So first and foremost, if there's any opportunity, Paul, for the city C I P, which does, does cover a lot of our major. You know, replacement renovations. If there's, if there's room in that C I P, we certainly want to go there where possible. In terms of having to then find money in the maintenance budget, Sean, if you want to take that, we certainly need to, again, we, we're required by the controllers with good practice. We actually have to show that we have budget, not just our bottom line budget, but actually in those line items. So we will do, and we show on the kind of a line item, so we transfer money in. But Sean, if you wanted to talk about. How you think about when, when, you know, David and Emily Higgins, um, they come to us and, and say, we're running short in this area. You know, can you provide support? And so we will tech, you know, we typically have to transfer money in to make sure those bill, and we want to make sure vendors are paid.
Well, we do, um, yeah, that's a good point, Liam. I mean, we do our monthly. Budget forecast, so we keep our pulse, you know, we keep our fingers on the pulse of where. The various spending are, and if we do need to move money into maintenance, our first place would be to check within operations. So if there's savings in any of the utilities accounts, or if there's savings in overtime. We would, uh, we would essentially move funds from there. And if, if neither of those are available. We look to other places in the budget that might make sense, trying, trying to stay as close to. Expenses as possible, but if we need to, we could, we can move funds from other accounts.
On the transportation, you mentioned. Two things, that we only get one bid because we have a requirement that the buses be stored within five miles. And two, that we're paying for, through the contractor for space for a yard for those buses. And, and the question I would ask. Is, have we ever considered. Expanding the diameter within which buses could be stored in order to potentially have more competitors for the bid? And the second question is, have we considered. Use of school facilities for the yards. For example, Newton South High School not only has a big parking lot, but it has. A long windy street around the school where buses could be stored overnight and perhaps even during the day. So have we considered either of those options?
Right. So, thank you. Um, I, you know, we have the first part in terms of thinking about, I think at one point, I think this was a while ago, we actually had a, I think we had a requirement that they part, be parked in Newton. We have expanded to within five miles outside of Newton. So it's, you know, so you could be in a wall theme. I guess you could be in a Wells, you could be in a Needham to do that. It's still an expensive area. It is something in the next bid, we could think about uh expanding. I think I'm, I'm channeling with Jeannie here. We do one of the benefits of having it close by though, Paul, is, is basically for the, for, for lack of a better word, for, for breakdowns. So when a bus breakdown, break, breaks down or we miss a bus, we do need quickly. And right now they're in Newton. We quickly are on dispatch and they are sending a bus. So if the bus gets stranded, the bus slips, if a bus is, is an accident, even a minor one, sometimes they're held for a long time. We can send a backup bus. So if that bus is twenty minutes, thirty minutes, you know, even outside of Newton and then getting in Newton. There, that response time is limited. It's not, again, it's, I'm not saying that's the end, end-all factor. Ideally, you'd have a, a, a bus depot relatively close to Newton, and we could think about that. That would be a parameter. I would say it's not the only factor why. They do that, but I do think it is, it is a factor why some other vendors don't look at it, but we could think about expanding it again. I would. I, I'd just be reluctant to say, you know, we don't want somebody in New Hampshire. We wouldn't want somebody so, so far that they couldn't, they couldn't get to us, but. Previously, you know, Eastern at one point had in West Roxbury, they, they had a depot. They are trying to build out a site in Wallam right now. They've been running some permitting stuff that they've got there, but they could, they, you know. There are sites, I think, that are, you know, within proximity that could work. Um, they have a site up in Bill Ricka. Again, that would be some distance, I think, and thinking about backup, but I, I don't know if that could be the only parameter. Maybe there's a certain small number of buses that we could figure out. And the second part is that we have explored, we have specifically explored Newton South at one point. There are some student parking on, on both sides. You know, it's a neighborhood area with, with just Brandeis Road there. It would impact those, those communities significantly. It is something we could look at. Um, with that, you do need parking for the bus drivers themselves, their own vehicle. You wouldn't, I ideally have an area for them to have meetings, have a bathroom, have a, you know, have a basically kind of a manager depot type area, not necessarily a whole. Shop for them to, to fix their vehicles. They take those, they take those off um to have that. That was an area that we've looked at. It was, it was, you know, kind of the con, the process that, you know, we, we, we looked at and in kind of response at the time was, it was, it would have been challenged, very challenging on the neighborhood at that time. To the extent the school committee, from my perspective, controls the land um that we, that we have and what we, we put there. So if the school committee wanted to ask me or ask, you know, we could have a process looking specifically at school committee property. You know, there's, we are tight in most of our sites. Newton South is an area that there's some land and many of our sites, you know. Even, even our staff can't even park in many of our sites right now. We have, you know, I work with, with the city department and, and in terms of looking at different areas and it's never, we've never been able to kind of solve it, Paul, but we've looked at Newton South. And I think at the time was just deemed too, too big of an impact on, on, on the area. And then additionally. We were only able to get about half the buses or about twenty-five. Ideally, they would be all at one place. They don't have to. It's not ideal for them to be in five or six or seven locations. It's not ideal for them to be in five or six or seven locations. So we tried to look, think about a north and a south side. We really struggled. Uh, we did think, we, we looked at what would one fifty Jackson, this was before it was fully just, I mean, that certainly is a big area, almost six acres, I believe. Um, but that would really, you know, it's not going to be possible now with the fields and parking that they've got there. So we're thinking about that. So that was an idea and it's something that I think that we could continue to, to study, um, uh, you know, for savings. From a, from a savings perspective, just think of it this way. I think that the, um, you know, Eastern has got two lots right now. And I think it could be upwards of almost four hundred thousand dollars in rent that they're paying for the, for that land. So if we said, here's a space, that would be a reduction. Um, and it, and maybe it's even more than that, uh, depending on what you, what, what we provided, if there was facilities for, for the staff. So and again, the, the further benefit of, of finding other ones. But so it has been looked at, but it, we've not been successful.
And one, one last quick one. Thank you so much. Um, on the Medicare stipend, roughly how many new people get that stipend each year? You have a certain number of retirements. Some percent choose to go on Medicare versus the city plan. Do you have a sense of how many new people?
You know, so we're.
We talked about dozen, two dozen.
Yeah, good question. So Sean and Alyssa, I don't know if you have a sense of that. We've been working with, with Jane Lomax and looking at this. Um, in total, we had about nine hundred and sixty people, but I, um, on this, but out, out of those people that, that are employee, some of them have a spouse that's also gets this benefit as well. They don't have, they did not actually have to be a Newton Public School employee or a City of Newton employee. So it's about nine hundred and sixty total people, of which a good number of them have actually two plans, have, have two plans on that. Um, you know, we would have anywhere from fifty to a hundred retirements a year. What I don't know is how, out of, you know, are they all, you know, at sixty-five, are they all Medicare eligible? So I don't think I've got a good answer for you. I think it could be in that twenty to forty range per year. Keep in mind, this is morbid, but we've also certainly got people that are also dying off as well. So with that net change, uh, I don't know. Sean or Alyssa, you know, any, any, any sense for that? Something we could look at to try and get a number. Um, Sean or Alyssa, any, any thought you had on that in terms of looking at those numbers?
Uh, my only thought is that I agree that we have about fifty people who are retiring. Um, but I cannot say how many of those are, are Medicaid eligible. So I'm in the same boat you are there, Liam.
But, but if we look back in the last two or three years, we get a rough idea. I, I don't imagine it would change all that much over the course of four or five years. Sure. Thank you.
Sure thing. Mayor Fuller, you wanted to interject at some point, I think. Are you good now?
Okay. Thank you. Um, other members, questions? Go ahead, Anping. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Well, I kind of interesting last question too, uh, ju- just kind of curious about the situation. So if, if, if a retiree reached the sixty-five, do we encourage them to say, hey, now it's time for you to apply for Medicare? Or, or still it's totally their option and they can still get the reimbursement?
Yeah. Mayor's ready for that. Yes.
Uh, in two thousand and nine, the city, which includes the school employees for this, um, accepted mass general law, X, Y, Z. I can get you those names so that, um, unlike in previous times, um, if somebody is eligible for Medicare, they must take it.
That's what I heard from my colleagues at the department, but, okay. I know it's more technical, so we don't have time. Okay. My question, um, I, I hope I'm being a little bit sensitive because, uh, again, Leanne, you, you, you're doing a lot of things and a lot of data and a lot of areas. So I'm particularly interested in this kind of diagram, non-instructional, uh, you give us a lot of circles, a data analysis, planning and project management, two and a half FTE. So basically, uh, Katie and, uh,
And yeah, so Katie is our, our director of, uh, kind of data analysis and enrollment. Um, Stephanie is our kind of director of planning, uh, projects and sustainability. And we have a, a kind of a data finance analyst, a point five, point five, that is the other, other point five of this position. So they're not, you know, they, I, I lumped them into one category and they do do different things. Um, Stephanie is more involved obviously with the projects with, with, you know, with the looking at this, but Katie is certainly involved with the projects in terms of thinking about the enrollments, impact enrollments, uh, and thinking about the district and student assignment working group, things like that.
So technically they are not on the same team.
Right. Well, I mean, you, you know, I've got the big green, they're, they're all part of BFP.
Okay.
And so we're all the same thing.
Not my main folks. My main folks here is, you know, first, I was very delighted when I heard a couple of years ago, we added, uh, this half, you know, FTE who's responsible, be expeditif within two offices. But now with increasing demands on the data analysis, this is a huge work. And, you know, even a moment ago, when we talked to Stephen about the, uh, you know, the, uh, the uh, uh, the computer use and, you know, for young grades and, you know, talking about data warehouse. This is a huge project, by the way, to build a data house. I don't know, of course, definition of data house certainly need to be discussed here. But I was very excited if we, Newton has data house. And, you know, I've been talking about this data since I came on board and we need that. But, but it's a lot of work. Even this afternoon and, uh, Cass Smith, we had, uh, and Chris, we had a calendar working group. You know, Katie was very helpful to design this survey. Well, my, you know, this is another lot of work. It's not even data analysis. It's just design the survey and then we collect data. So what I'm saying is this area, I really want to highly, highly emphasize with our new superintendent coming on board and we all heard in Natick District, she did a lot of work. One of the work I was so impressed is she had every student they did some kind of data analysis, so monitor student development. I was so impressed about that. And that, that's one of the reasons I thought, um, you know, our new superintendent will come here. We, we all like to look for that kind of, uh, uh, assessment. So this way we can, we can confidently say if students are making progress, because otherwise we can say all kind of nice things by program or students. But where's data? And, you know, I heard my colleagues asking for data all the time, but considering the count uh, uh, the team, you know, uh, one and a, two and a half. I mean, it's not much work. We can really ask for that. I, I feel a little bit guilty when we sometime talking about, we need more data. But, but someone had to do the data. So again, I know the budget is so tight, so tight. You have to cut here and there. But I think this is one of critical areas. And it, it's, it's not only for technical, for logistic, this is impacting on our, our educational quality, curriculum, program, everything. And I think probably two FTE is kind of minimum. And, and that, that's just my personal view. And certainly I try to be careful. I'm not stepping on anything, especially on your toes, say, hey, this is something we make decision, not you make the, but, but I'm here arguing. I'm willing to put, you know, uh, the emphasis here publicly, let people know, because this is data and takes time, takes time to collect data, to analyze data, to publish data and to use the data for, for the benefit of our students, for the program, for everything. So that, that's my statement. Thanks.
Thank you, Anping. Go ahead, Kathy.
So thank you, Anping. Uh, the one thing I, I do want to say is our teachers, our principals, they're looking at data all the time. You hear us talk about interventionists, when you hear us talk about achievement gaps. So it, it isn't that we're not looking at data. It is an area, and I couldn't agree more, that is really just kind of exploding as far as questions, even programs, you know, are these programs worth keeping? Um, you know, is, uh, information that, again, we're able to collect, we're able to share with you and should share with you on a very regular basis. I know you have obviously, uh, heard from Dr. Nolan, uh, she and I have, have talked um, about this. You've heard in the budget, and this was a difficult budget to put additional uh, pieces in there that will, will measure data, whether it is looking at the profile of a graduate, which she has done in Natick, whether it is, uh, you know, looking at engagement with families, making sure that we're engaging with families. So I, I do think that you're poised. And, and again, when I came here, I remember one of my first meetings with the central staff asking some of those similar questions. And I think we all have to admit that certainly it's an area that they were also focused on. The pandemic hit and you know what happened to everybody's focus. So again, it's not that it hasn't been on the radar. It, it certainly has, but I think you're well poised. Um, I know that sounds difficult to say when we're sitting here looking at budget deficits. But I, I think it's important to note that it is clearly a priority, I think, for the district moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy. And again, thanks, Anping. I think we all agree with your, your sentiments. Um, other questions from the members? Here now, and I see, I see Chris.
Thank you. I, I, we had this discussion, which is for everyone else's benefit. Uh, the memo that you asked I prepare for this week that we discussed last week, I will be submitting to, uh, Lisa for tomorrow morning. So it'll be available for discussion Wednesday.
Good. And this saves me, uh, an email, which is if we have a large volume of folks signing up for the public hearing, I think it'll be understandable because this one, separate from, um, the city charter hearing that we had a, a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know when. Um, but this is by statute, and so we'll have to hear everyone who signs up. And if the time that that takes up extends beyond which we're still awake and, uh, you know, really ready to tackle this issue, we might have to bump that to our next meeting. And that would be, I think, the April twenty-fourth. So we have three other, two or three other items for that meeting, one of which is a social emotional update, SEI update, I think. Um, I can't remember the top of my head, but there's a few items that might have to get pushed, one of which is a negotiations update, which is critical for us to do during that meeting. So I hear you. I acknowledge that's something that we will try to get to, but it'll be dependent on a few other things. So again, that saves me an email. Thank you, Chris. Um, all right, uh, Liam, I had one question. Do you have any other questions on the budget or the BFP? No? So I wanted to reiterate, Liam, something you touched on, which was the concept of, uh, our regulatory obligations with regard to transportation for students. So we are obligated to transport students K to six, who are two point oh one miles from a school, um, from their school. And so you said that there are, there would be potential savings from that. However, we would offset, we would lose our approximately nine hundred thousand dollar fee revenue from it. But what would we net? What would we gain if we were to strictly pare down transportation to its required, um, it's strictly required parts?
Correct. Um, so the, the, the gross cost, so the thirty-four buses, I believe the cost for each bus is around a hundred and twenty grand right now. Um, I need to just do, so I believe the number, the net savings would be about twenty. We would still need, we think, seven to eight buses. So, uh, instead of the three point one million dollars, um, we would need, you know, maybe eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we calculated it around two point one million dollars overall savings, um, to the district. So it would be saving, you know, twenty-six, we would be reducing a, a good number of buses. Again, we'd be reducing that fee, but the net savings is in that two million, two point one million dollars, uh, to the district.
And approximately, what is the percentage of the, what percentage of the cost of transporting students is borne by the fee? So the four hundred or four hundred fifty, I'm apologies, I forget what the exact number is. But what percentage would that be?
So the gross is, uh, the gross cost for the thirty-four buses is about four million dollars and we're going to get, uh, about, you know, almost a quarter of that. So nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, um, so we're getting about twenty-five percent or so, um, of the, of the bus, of the in-city, you know, of our, in-city busing uh, back by fees. And that's again, with the proposed rate increase. If you don't have the proposed rate increase, it's only, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's less than that.
So when families are thinking about the fee, which I, I do believe I can say is universally unpopular, uh, where families, myself included, are paying approximately twenty-four percent of the overall cost of transporting our, our children to school. Okay. I think that helps. All right. Thank you so much. Once again, thank you, Alyssa, and thank you, Sean. Thanks, Liam. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, we're going to wrap up with Kathy Smith wanted to address the committee at the end. So go ahead and take it away, Kathy.
Thank you, Tamika. Um, I want to bring to everybody's attention, um, that there was some concern. Uh, there was information, uh, brought to me, I want to say late last week about a presentation that is happening this Friday at Newton North High School. And I would like people to think, a- as I have a prepared statement, but I want you to know that again, as the superintendent, I had to dig in a little deeper, understand the process, had conversations with, you know, Principal Turner, Dr. Turner, uh, with my assistant superintendent, uh, Toby Romer, and and like you, I've received, you know, certainly some emails, some concerns. So let me, first of all, before I read a prepared statement, I do want to say I, I'm very comfortable and I have come to really appreciate in Newton, um, the, uh, opportunities for your students as they progress through their years or their clubs or their involvement to, uh, be able to plan, you know, to have student advisors, but to talk about what they want to share with their fellow classmates, you know, their peers, uh, people they go to school, all in preparation for, you know, again, becoming young adults, which, which they certainly are. So here we have a, a club I'm going to talk about, um, which has, uh, teacher advisors, uh, students preparing for a cultural day, as you do throughout the district and so many different clubs. So again, I am supporting what the students are doing. I will be there on Friday for this presentation and let me share with you the reasons why. So the prepared statement. So the Newton Public Schools and the mayor's office have received inquiries about a drag performer who has been scheduled to present as part of To Be Glad Day, a student-sponsored cultural awareness day at Newton North, sponsored by North Gender Sexuality Alliance Student Organization. I would like to provide the community with important context around this performance. Cultural Awareness Days are student-led by design, giving students agency and voice in sharing their background with other students and staff. These days are important to our students in building awareness of and respect for the many different cultures and identities that make up our diverse community. So far this year, students at Newton North have led numerous events, including Black Culture Day, Asian Culture Day, Jewish Culture Day, Civics Day, Disability Awareness Day, and Middle East and North Africa Mina Day. To Be Glad Day in particular, has a more than twenty-year-long history at North, during which time it has brought wonderful events, speakers and performances to our school to celebrate and support our LGBTQ plus community members. In general, the GSA has a long and important history in Newton, as the Newton South, uh, GSA was the first of its kind in the country. With regard to the scheduled drag performance, students selected this type of performance because drag is a performance art that is often a part of LGBTQ plus events. While we are aware that there are many different types of these performances, this particular performer has curated a performance that is appropriate for the teenage audience. The performance includes a spoken message of kindness, of inclusivity and positivity, followed by an uplifting song. I think I'm told it has to do with Lady Gaga and many of you probably know the song better than I do, although I enjoy Lady Gaga. Like many of the performances in our schools, this performance seeks to deliver an important message in a way that engages the teen audience. Similar to other performances, it has also been vetted by both faculty advisors and our student leaders. While we expect this to be an engaging performance, we know some students may not wish to attend. As with any performance, they do have the option to opt out and can instead spend the period studying in the cafeteria. And let me also say, I'm aware this is an academic block. I'm also aware it is the Friday before our April vacation. Our Cultural Awareness Days are an important part of our school culture, as they give students the opportunity to share pieces of their as they give students the opportunity to share pieces of their culture and identity, and they believe it is important for others to know and understand and to create a welcoming and inclusive community. Many students and staff look forward to these days of learning in a different way outside of the traditional classroom work. We are proud to support our LGBTQ plus students as they build awareness of and celebrate their identities within the context of our larger school community. And as I have shared with a number of you, um, I, I will be there, uh, on Friday. Uh, and will present back to you, uh, after, uh, taking part in this event.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions? Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Kathy. That was very clear and eloquently put. It's my impression that based on what you say and also from what I've heard from parents. That these activities actually give us an opportunity to reflect on our values and how we present them to the community. I wanna say as a father of a dancer and a choreographer, I've had the pleasure of learning from her about the artistry of drag performers like RuPaul and others. Uh, so I'm not in any way suggesting that I find those performances to be problematic. But I do find three aspects of this particular event to be concerning. Um, first, encouraging teachers and students to miss academic blocks, to participate in student-led club activities. Raises concerns for me about the school's commitment to delivery of science, math and other curriculum. More troubling is that an event like this during school hours is viewed as inappropriate by some parents and children. And then teenagers will be put in the position of being isolated from their peers and perhaps stigmatized by being asked to sit in the cafeteria if they choose, for whatever reason, to miss this performance. And finally, offering this particular type of club activities during the school day is offensive to a number of people in the community. I've heard from Muslim parents, for example, who are in the middle of Ramadan, that this program feels disrespectful. They will be celebrating the holiest night of their year. The anniversary of the revelation of the Quran at the time this program is being offered. Now, I don't expect our students to be sensitive to all those issues. But I believe our parents expect faculty advisors and school administrators to be and to offer helpful guidance to students in preparing their club activities. So that in the pursuit of inclusion and tolerance, we don't inadvertently practice exclusion. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Paul. Any other, Kathy, would you like to? Sorry, go ahead.
Um, you know, certainly I don't wanna minimize when I did mention it was the end of the day. It is an academic block and and clearly I understand, I'm not sure, again, if this has been the practice before. I know kids are always excited about a performance or probably about a way to do something different than academics. But my point is, we, we should as, uh, as advisors, uh, as leaders, you know, take a look at particular dates. I did not realize, uh, that date and maybe it could have been done on a different date. If these are things that we need to take a look at when we're trying to be inclusive, we do not wanna be exclusive. I will bring to our leadership, uh, at, uh, our school, Dr. Turner. I will talk to him. And making sure the last thing we want kids to be stigmatized or to feel any other way, other than making a decision that they or their parents have made. If they do not want to, you know, take part in really a small part of this day's events of panels going on and education and many other things. This is one small part of it. Um, I think they saw that as probably the, the exciting part of it, the ending, as you said, song, dance. But I will address it with Rajeev.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So I think, Paul, in response to what you've said, it, it is my understanding that all of the student-led cultural days take place during both academic and win, non-academic, like traditional academic blocks. That's how these days operate within the school calendar. They, whether it's um, the Jewish Students Awareness Day or Black Cultural Day or Mina. These blocks and, and events are offered both in academic and in win blocks. And students and teachers can choose to participate by taking their classes out of their ordinary scheduled activities to these other events. There's no other way to run these kinds of programs at the school. And so I think that one of the things we have to think about in terms of education is what composes education? And I think that cultural understanding and awareness are just as educational as reading a novel or learning a, a new math concept or a new concept in science. And I think that's what our teachers recognize when they make the decisions to recommend that their class attend all of these cultural events that are offered in our schools.
Thank you, Kathy. Any others? Go ahead, Rajeev. Don't forget to pull your mic.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, thank you for the, the very clear statement and um, and for highlighting how long GSA has been a part of both our high schools. I, I personally know students who were incredibly, uh, significantly supported by, by GSA, by their peers, by academic advisors. Faculty advisors to the group. And it made a, a significant positive impact on their lives. So I, I do appreciate you pointing that out as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rajeev. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, if, if, um, you know, there's, there's one thing that struck me through the, through the process of getting all these emails and uh, the, uh, you know, discussion, uh, that's taken out there, if you wanna call it that. You know, I think we need to do a better job of realizing where these issues are going to arise. And, you know, recognizing that, um, while this performer is, is very hopefully gonna put on a, a, you know, age-appropriate, um, uh, performance. You know, there, there was obviously things sent to all of us that you know, related to that performer that would not be age-appropriate. And it, and I don't think they were necessarily uh, as tied to, um, you know, a, a gay or trans theme or anything like that, as much as they were just to general adult content. Um, so I, I think that, you know, one of the takeaways for me here is that NPS has, just, we just have to do a better job of communicating these things upfront and not letting these things get away from us, which I feel like happens time and again. And, you know, when, when, I feel like when families hear about this stuff from you know, some blogger site or something, as opposed to hearing it from NPS. They naturally go to that point of skepticism of like, what are they hiding? What, what, what's, you know, that, that's, I feel like an element of, of what we can learn how to do better and, and make sure you know, recognize, hey, there's gonna be something that might look controversial. Let's, let's go explain it upfront and give the speech you just gave of you know, this has been vetted, this is deemed age-appropriate, and we are comfortable with it. And I, I think that would be helpful in the future.
Thanks.
No, I, I, I couldn't agree more. And, uh, and the reason I say that is I think what we always want is for, as I said, our students to be able to take part, to be excited, to see something as a positive thing that they have given to their school community and beyond. So I, I, I couldn't agree more and and that is something, again, uh, that I have to work on with my staff to make sure that, you know, we are aware and we are ahead of it so we can support our, our youngsters, uh, in the way that, that they need to be supported.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, real quick, I, I see a couple of folks. Um, I, I think the schools in generally do a very fair-to-mindingly good job about, um, giving parents a heads up. I know my own children's, uh, school, we do get heads up when, um, there's going to be something that might be remotely controversial. Um, I don't know if that happened here. I'm not a North parent, but I imagine uh, in my ideal of ideals would align up with exactly what you said, which is the parents get a heads up that says here's what we're doing, here's the reason why it's happening. These are the ways that we will make sure your children are safe, secure and well-supervised by the adults in the school. Um, again, I don't know that that didn't happen here. I'm not a North parent. Um, go ahead. I think I saw Cove and then Emily.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, I wanna support what, um, Kathy said and, you know, I think that it's, it's, um, the school day, especially at the high school, but really at all levels incorporates a lot of things. Um, and if anyone has spent a day before vacation in school, there probably is a better use of time, which is having an engaging activity. I also think that it's impossible for us to chase not offending people. Um, when I was a new teacher, I got tasked with planning a UN day. Um, and planned a huge slate of events and then found out that some people boycott UN day. Um, and, uh, that was not something I was aware of. Um, I now understand why they would boycott you, you end day, but I think that we have to, um, you know, I think we do have to communicate. I agree with Chris about that. And I think that communication, I don't know what communication went to the parents. I think there could have been possibly better communication to the school committee who were suddenly getting, um, many, many emails. And quite honestly, um, some threatening emails and texts as well, um, which I didn't appreciate from the community. Um, I think that, you know, I think that that kinda communication does, um, does help. You know, help explain, but I think we can't chase not offending, um, people in any way, shape or form, because there will you know, I think we have to allow our students the room to plan these activities and to engage in them. And I think that's, um, an important part of school. So I think about it.
Thank you, Cove. Go ahead, Emily.
Um, first and foremost, thank you very much for your statement. Um, I agreed with everything that you said and I really appreciated how you stated things. Um, second, Chris, I also agree with you. I'm always a fan of communication and getting out in front of things. If, if we, if we think something may potentially be controversial, but I also appreciate the fact that we can't always do that. Um, I just wanna say a quick thing about To Be Glad Day. Which is really a time for students to share what their experiences are and what makes them unique and a celebration of who they are. And I just wanna remind everyone, going back to the YRBS, that non-gender conforming students are two or three times more likely to have significant and serious issues over their, their, their peers. And if this is an opportunity for them to feel part of a community and to share what their experiences are and to celebrate who they are as human beings, I'm all for it. So.
Emily, I, I'm gonna put the, the nail on the head of your nail. I have no idea. I bungle my analogies all the time. I also was looking right at the youth risk behavior survey. And the fact that we had a presentation this summer, which gave us alarming rates of data about how our transgender, our non-binary, our gender, non-conforming students are some of the students who are reporting the highest incidence of cyberbullying and feeling unsafe and unsupported in their schools. And when I look at an event like To Be Glad Day and this particular slate of activities, I don't see something to be fearful of. I don't see something that should have been dragged across social media and vilified in the most unseemly way. I see a resonant celebration of culture, of art, of individual expression. And I remember one of my colleagues on the school committee a couple of years ago who was proud as could be of himself and the way that he chose to express his I don't know, individual character, Matthew Miller. And he was a drag queen and I think it was fabulous that he shared that right here in this room. Actually, we were on Zoom at the time, so I take that back. But he shared that with our community and he led this district with distinction and honor. He wasn't someone to be vilified or, or it, it, it really is, it's quite sad, some of the commentary that we received. And we didn't receive those, the majority of the, the really harsh ones that made us all cringe, at least I think it made us all cringe, from parents. We received those from folks who didn't have kids in the schools, who probably didn't have a child who was non-binary. Who probably didn't know why this day was important and who didn't have their facts right. That's the part that I thought, hold on. Some of these social media stories just take on a life beyond reasoning. And this was one of those cases and it didn't make sense to me. And I'm glad to hear your statement, Kathy. I think that goes a far, far way of putting to rest any of the unease that this is not an age-appropriate performance. And Emily, to your point, yes, our students need this. It need, they need this to be seen, to feel valued and to have their peers cheering and celebrating right along with them. So, thank you for that. Go ahead, Anping.
Thanks. Um, I, I, I could think of two examples, um, uh, a, as a parent uh, involved in that kind of situation. So here, I, I heard some people mentioned that probably students feel fine, but their parents feel different, which I could appreciate. Remember, i- i- when my son, uh, was, uh, fifth, fifth grade and there was exhibition of the drugs. I mean, the, this is a police, uh, folks came to the school and tell kids basically the drugs were really bad. But when I look at the drugs, I say, wow, these kids just fifth grade. You ask them to learn all those drugs, names, all different. I was shocked. But at that time, I did not know how to express my feeling. My son probably not think much at all. But as a parent, I was shocked. That's one thing. And second time, that's political. Um, I, I, I hope that no mind to tell the story, which impressed me so deeply. My son was a sophomore at Newton North. They invited, um, level two, two. They invited Hao Zing. If anyone know Hao Zing, he was called as socialist communist. And he made a speech to the student club saying, hey, American was staging two wars. The I- Iraq War and Afghanistan War, and these war were unjust. Basically, he made a win statement. That was shocking to everybody. He said, our president was at same moral level as those terrorists. And you could imagine. My son came back, said, hey daddy, I listened to a gentleman. He said, you know, war was bad and he was the, you know, airman and during second war, he said there no small bombs. I said, wow, that's great. He was historian. So my son did not think much. But the community, the letters came in. I, I follow the letters in a Newton tab, you know. And the principal was attacked, vehemently attacked. How could this someone to tell the students this age, our president was as bad as terrorists? And I remember, I said, wow, I wrote letter to, uh, principal. I, I strongly support that. I said, that's the classical example of liberal education. But anyway, came back. I think some parents, possibly new immigrant parents from East European country from China, from other Asian country happened to have a little bit conservative views and look at this, they could be shocked, could be shocked. And I agree that probably most parents than the students who express their outrage. Uh, I'm curious to see if students had some different views. As someone mentioned, that the students from different culture and you know, Islamic culture, possibly. And, um, so I'm thinking about twenty years ago, ten years ago, there's health education, there was some sexual things about, you know, educating students and some parents were kind of really very angry and, you know, they, a lot of story. And so later, I think school did a better job to kind of let parents know, we are going to have this chapter in school. I- if your kids feel not comfortable or if you don't feel comfortable, you can take kids out of classroom. So this, I think, helped the parents, helped the community to understand some things coming and also respect their choices. So like, you know, Kathy, if your statement or principal put some statement, let parents know, we are going to have this performance. And, you know, but also keep in mind, not all the parents even know when you say drug, uh, drug performance. I double-checked the word, the meaning of the drug, myself, been here thirty years. Now, if some parents came here just few years, they have no clue at all. And when they see this. They have no clue at all. And when they see this, you know, I went to New York to see the um. The performance, the the festival, I mean, the whole streets, whole city was full of that. But still, I was still. Very struck by the performance. Certain performance, of course, go going out of way and you still will be shocked. So, my perspective is, I agree that better communication is good and being a little bit, uh, you know, um. Proactive statements, something going out, this would kind of uh educate the. Certain pants, not all, like you guys, you probably seen those performers many times. So to you, it's natural, it's education, wonderful. But keep in mind, they're probably thirty percent of parents who came from different culture. And some just even did not speak English well. To them, this is shock. Even to me. I'm still, when I see the performance, I chuckled, but not. I I could not say I fully appreciate all the performance, even being here thirty, more than thirty years. So. As educator, I I'm willing to be open-minded, but still takes time. So I could understand some parents probably cheering angry. There might be some other parents who have some agenda, I don't know. But certainly, I hope we do not say, well. Hands just take this opportunity to say whatever they want to say. So. I think we should be a little bit more uh, you know, uh, open-minded to to appreciate some parents consider.
Thank you. Anping, go ahead Mayor Fuller.
I think what you've just seen in the last twenty minutes is the best of. Um, a school committee grappling with the issues of the day. Um, I just, um. As we all are trying to. Actualize diversity, equity and inclusion and celebrate differences, understand our differences. How do we talk about it as it rubs up against other values? Uh, whether it's an academic block being used for cultural awareness or the sensitivities, we. Live in a really diverse community here and there are certain members of the community who will find this. Very troubling, if not offensive. And but we're trying to understand. So what is education all is all about? In a high school setting when kids are in their teenage years. What does it mean to educate them and what's the role of a public school district? And I think you saw the best of us as we raised questions, still struggle a little bit. Who makes these decisions? How do we um, how do we learn about them? How do we talk about them? How do we communicate ahead of time? Um, and the only asterix I would add is if um, Dr. Turner and the Newton North. Community after vacation. Can consider so um, processing it with both the adults in the building and the students who are in the building. So, what did you make of all this? What have you learned? Was it mean? And if um, if there are students who have different points of view, so was this a good? Good way of bringing forward or had concerns, be great to have that processing happen. Um, and bravo to this group as we to kind of think it through and. Figure out our values, but lifting up and celebrating students. Um, um, on this day is important and necessary and good. And isn't it wonderful that we come from a? Twenty-year tradition of doing so.
Thank you Mayor Fuller. Once again, thank you Cathy for uh bringing that. Discussion up for us. I think it was an important one for us to have. Um, with that, we've concluded the posted business for tonight's meeting. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, April twelfth. We will hold a public hearing on the FY twenty-four budget. The hearing will begin at six P M on Zoom. Members of the public can pre-submit a request to speak for up to two minutes. On the FY twenty-four budget using a signup form that's available on our webpage. Individuals will also be able to request to speak virtually by raising a hand at any time during the hearing. Once the public hearing is concluded, concluded, the school committee will hold its regular meeting and as always, thank you to our central staff. And a big thanks to everyone who attended tonight. We appreciate it. Our meeting is now adjourned.